Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our meeting. It is Wednesday, September 10, and the current time is 7:01. Thank you very much for your patience. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Gomez.
Good evening.
Commissioner Bolton.
Good evening.
Commissioner Wright.
Good evening.
Commissioner Patterson.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor Daniel.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. If everyone will please stand, and Commissioner Marlon Bolton will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will have a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one makes you an equal god into this bill with liberties and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
City Attorney, any report?
No report, none of mayor.
All right. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to everyone in the audience, because I know that the commission is very well aware, of our representative Mitch Rosenwald of District 98, who is here to have some greetings and share some good words for us. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Gomez, Vice Mayor Daniel, Commissioner Bolton.
Shner. Repeat that. Good evening, Mayor Gomez, Vice Mayor Dan-- Vice Mayor Daniel, Commissioner Bolton, Commissioner Wright, and Commissioner Patterson, and City Manager. As the mayor said, my name is Mitch Ro-- is this-- yeah, here we go. My name is Mitch Rosenwald. I'm your-- one of your three state representatives. I represent sort of the-- pretty much the same areas as-- or part of the same areas as Commissioner Bolton in the east part of Tamarack. I also-- your other state representatives are Representative Dunkley and Representative Daly, and then your state senator is Rosalyn Osgood. And so we're your legislative representatives up in Tallahassee. I just wanted to give you a quick report on that. I also-- in District 98, it's Oakland Park. I happen to be the former mayor and commissioner, so I do know local government. I have much respect for all of you and all the issues that you have to deal with for your Tamarack residents. Also, it's Pompano Deerfield Beach, Fort Lauderdale and Lauderdale Lakes. So, wanted to let you-- give you a very brief, because I know you had a little bit of updates on the legislative session and what's to come. First, I think in all of our roles, we do need to acknowledge the horror of what happened today to Charlie Kirk. Political violence of any stripe is-- should be condemned, and I know that we're condemning that and thinking of his-- of his family and loved ones. So, wanted to share a little bit. As your state rep, I'm able to take seven policy bills, so I would love for all of your feedback and for the residents of Tamarack on the bills that I should champion on your behalf. I also can champion your appropriations. I know that I just talked to your city manager and opportunities for your water treatment plant and other appropriations, so I'm happy to work those with Senator Osgood and others for the upcoming session. So, we know there's an affordability crisis. I did have two bills, one of which actually with Senator Osgood. Unfortunately, they did not pass, but they were good housing bills. One was to help veterans with security deposits, another was to help low-income seniors in condos to give some immediate relief. Unfortunately, those did not pass this time. But some good news for housing in terms of those-- I know there's a number of condos, condo owners, not all condo owners in Tamarack. Two bills help condo owners. One is called House Bill 913 for condos and cooperative associations. That basically-- that required assessment, the SERS, Structural Integrity Reserve Study, that's been postponed until this coming December, so condo owners have extra time. They also have an additional two years before they need to pay and have extra streams of funding for-- to get loans, so that does give some relief. We know our people in condos are hurting. Also, for those in condos for the association boards, there's a-- we've extended the application. Governor DeSantis signed it for the, might say, Florida Condo Pilot Program. It's been extended, so if associations choose, that helps with hardening, obviously. I think, knock on wood, we'll be safe from-- shouldn't say the word yet. The season ends in November, but you know, for the-- all the wind we've been getting for hardening from hurricanes. I also want to tell you that, you know, for homeowners, we're hurting from insurance. We've seen in the news, the Miami Herald a while back and even recently, that some of these insurance companies, mayor, there's questions about how much they're reporting their profits correctly. The Office of Insurance Regulation for the state does require them to report their profits. However, there's some shenanigans, perhaps, that the newspapers have reported, that we want to get transparency to make sure that they're reporting all their profits, because they should not be-- they need to be reporting all of this. One of the things I want to do, that a bill I want to introduce, is to shift our-- when we have a hurricane, I have citizens, someone might have State Farm or Allstate or whatever. We pay them, right, a lot of money, and they absorb the risk, right? There are some models out there that if the state absorbs the catastrophic risk for wind, and we pay the state a lower share, because the state's a nonprofit, obviously, that that might be a potential solution. It would take a big shift in thinking and a paradigm shift for this to occur, but I am interested in looking at that as some legislation to help us out with homeowners' insurance. A couple pieces of good news unanimously, and we do work-- we do work bipartisan much of the time, not all the time, but much of the time for land management. You all saw in the news over a year ago when Governor DeSantis had floated an idea that there should be development in state parks, and there was an uproar over that. And bipartisan legislation came through to say we want to make sure that golf courses and pickleball courts, you know, they belong in city parks or wherever, but not in state parks. And so that legislation was passed. We also have an increase in the children's healthcare and helping those with-- children who've been on Medicaid, so that's a great one we're looking at or that we passed. One bill that was not a good one that passed, I voted no on it, was an amendment to the state constitution that actually makes it harder to put a citizen ballot initiative on the ballot. Now you have to get driver's license or state ID information. The supervisor of election has to mail it back to you, confirm it's your signature. You have fewer days to turn it in, and if you're late, the fee is higher. To me, this is a threat to democracy, and it's unconstitutional, but I'm in the minority party on that one. Regardless, you know, it doesn't ban them, of course, but it does make it harder to put citizen ballot initiatives on the agenda, on the ballot. Coming up, I'm going to be looking, exploring some more on veterans and homelessness, as well as-- as well as some issues relating to property insurance, as I mentioned. A couple hot issues before I close, and any questions, mayor, if that's allowed. Property taxes. So, the Speaker of the House convened a Select Committee on Property Taxes. You may have seen Governor DeSantis wants the legislature to look at that. The state senate has not followed through yet on that, so nothing can happen if the senate doesn't approve it too. But the House, it's important to the Speaker. I will tell you, though, that, as we all know, we have no state income tax. We voted in the House to lower the state-- the sales tax a bit. That did not pass the senate, but we all want to-- we're all interested in affordability, but as a former mayor myself, and you all know intimately well, what's underneath here is wastewater and stormwater pipes. The people protecting us are our fire and police and your beautiful parks and everything and the develop-- development team you have. And this money doesn't come-- it does come from a lot of grants that you have, but there needs to be some public money. And I'll say to you, I've spoken across the aisle, I happen to be a Democrat. Republicans have privately told me that they're not for getting rid of public-- I mean, getting rid of property taxes either. Everybody knows we need to pay the police and fire and stormwater and wastewater. So, we're going to see what might happen. If anything happens, it might be a fairly small piece, but I did just receive an award from the Florida League of Cities. I knew-- Commissioner Bolton and I served on Broward League of Cities together, and I'm a-- I've received some home rule, a champion, if you will, an award. So, the vast majority of the time, I vote for local home rule because you're the closest to the voters. So, I just want you to know that I think-- I hope I'm not wrong, but I think something very small will happen with property taxes, not like yanking this away from the city of Tamarack and other cities. Two other points, just to bring up. Three other things, redistricting. Again, not in the senate, but in the House, the-- both the governor and Speaker Perez, the Speaker of the House have wanted to look at redistricting. We all are familiar with what's going on in Texas, to get five seats for Republicans, and then California, maybe five for Democrats. So, for Florida, they are looking at this. I'm against this. There's always a need to look at redistricting, but it should be done what's-- how we have in the Constitution, once a decade, not mid-decade, which is what it is now. And in fact, the seat that is being looked at is including the seat currently held by Congresswoman, right around here, Sheila McCormick. Regardless who occupies that seat, that's sort of the front and central seat that the governor is questioning whether this is the correct district for that, districting for that. So, that's what-- that's going to happen, but again, if it's not heard in the senate, it will die. Vaccines. I tell you, every day, it's something different, isn't it, Commissioner? Right now, the Surgeon General has stated that all vaccines are voluntary. We, of course, in the state constitution say some, or in statute say some are not voluntary, they're mandatory, like MMR, for example, measles, muscle measles, mumps, and rubella. So, we're going to take a look at this at the legislature, see which ones do seem to make sense. I'm not an epidemiologist, which ones make sense to be medic-- to be mandated, and which ones maybe for optional. And lastly, as of today, we all know about concealed weapons. People have a right to be registered and safely have their concealed weapon. Per the Florida Court of Appeals today, it says that open carry, which was seen as illegal, is actually allowable. So, that might come up in our legislature, the idea of people to open carry, like right in a holster. It's supposed to be safe, but like right in their holster where people can see it. So, anyway, with that, I wanted to introduce Tom Wilmouth, who's my legislative aide and has been around the legislature for a while. So, while the office is in Oakland Park, a little west of here, we're happy to come out and talk to any constituents. We have a newsletter, so my staff is reaching out to your city clerk to give a digital copy, and we'll get the physical copies to you all. Sorry if I talked a little too much, but I just wanted to ask you, mayor, if you had any questions or if your commission--
Personally, I don't, because I've had the pleasure of talking with you very recently as well, so I thank you for your service and all that you've done, and remembering about Tamarack, because I know we're not a large portion of your district, but thank you for remembering and including us. I see that Commissioner Bolton would like to speak. Also, one last thing, I do thank you for bringing up Mr. Kirk. My apologies for not doing that earlier.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, rep, for being here tonight. You did a wonderful job, and I commend you on the clear and concise presentation that you gave to us. My question is on the pickleball. You said that state now preempts pickleball in state parks, but not in city-owned parks?
Right, right. And I'm sorry, I can get you the bill number later. The context of this was about a year, two Junes ago. Someone had mentioned an initiative of Governor DeSantis's, it was in the newspaper, about potentially having state parks allow pickleball courts, golf courses, recreational development. I don't know about other development, but like some development. And there was a real uproar bipartisan, it wasn't Democrat or Republican or independent, about our parks, our state parks, our passive parks, you know, walking, hiking, there was sections for like tent camping and things like that, but they should, you know, be passive. So, this legislation, it's a land management bill that was brought by Republicans in the House and Senate and passed unanimously by all of us and signed by the governor, bans specific types of development in the state parks, which would include a golf course, a pickleball court, certainly housing, you know, certainly housing developments. And I can get more specific with you afterwards, but it says nothing about-- I mean, pickleball's a total trend, how many pickleball courts, I know they're popping up everywhere. So, it doesn't ban pickleball courts at all in city or county parks, it's just the state. But I think pickleball does belong in city parks and rec areas, of course they do, yeah, just not the state, yeah.
All right. Thank you for stopping by.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Come safely or stay with us if you want.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month was requested by myself. Would you like to come down Bethann or you want to stay there? Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease for children under the age of 18 in the United States. And whereas the causes for childhood cancer are largely unknown and more studies are needed to understand which treatments work best for children. And whereas the city of Tamarack is acutely aware of the profound impact that childhood cancer has on families and the broader community and recognizes the critical need to elevate awareness, provide robust support and advance research into serious illnesses. And whereas Thomas Bulger, a courageous young resident of Tamarack, was diagnosed with stage III Willem's tumor at the tender age of four and demonstrated remarkable bravery in his five-year battle against the disease until his passing on May 4, 2021, at the age of nine. Whereas in tribute to Thomas Bulger, his mother Bethann Frazier founded Live Like Tom Foundation to assist families and caregivers of children contending with cancer, perpetuating Thomas's spirit of perseverance and compassion. And whereas the city of Tamarack previously honored Thomas Bulger in September 2019 through the Kids of Love Foundation during Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, hereby bringing honor and recognition to both him and his family. Whereas Bethann Frazier, a devoted Tamarack resident, educator at Tamarack Elementary and part-time staffer in the city's park and rec department, has advocated for the designation of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the city of Tamarack encourages all its residents to participate in activities and events designed to foster awareness and understanding of childhood cancer while supporting those directly affected by this serious disease. Now therefore I, Michelle J. Gomez, Mayor of the City of Tamarack, Broward County, on behalf of this commission, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Tamarack.
I just wanted to say thank you again to the mayor, the commission, the city of Tamarack for once again proclaiming September for Childhood Cancer Awareness. This is my son, Thomas, my only child. We, he grew up here in Tamarack, we live in Westwood, and he loved the parks. I love Tamarack. I was born and raised here, actually. We grew up in Heath Gate. And I just want to thank you guys again for acknowledging this. I have, I try to turn my pain into a purpose by advocating now for other families and helping them financially. My village, who's most of the people that are here, that have helped me start my foundation, they were with me from the beginning, from when he was diagnosed at the age of four. But again, I just want to thank you all for this and I appreciate what the city of Tamarack does. And just to remember, childhood cancer isn't rare. A lot of people think it is, but it's not. And go gold for childhood cancer. Thank you.
Family, you want to come up?
Village?
Village people?
Guys, come up and get a picture?
Yeah.
Come on.
Don't be shy. Remember, we're family. Wherever you want.
They're putting him in the middle.
We figured it all out. Come on. Get up there, get up there.
I actually did get a hold of him and he was a little buttery.
It was a spider.
Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens. And whereas in the United States, 64 million adults and children have a disability and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide and the need is growing. Whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. And whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services and a deeply committed community of support. Whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. And whereas the city of Tamarack continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are embraced. Now therefore I, Michelle J. Gomez, Mayor of the city of Tamarack, on behalf of this commission, and in recognition of the service dogs and the adults and children with disabilities in our community, do hereby encourage all citizens to celebrate tasked-trained service dogs and be respectful of the rights afforded to the adults, children and veterans who lead a more independent life because their four-legged, intelligent furry assistants are there and proclaim September 2025 as National Service Dog Month in the city of Tamarack.
City Mayor Gomez and the city council. My name is Nicole Lortiz, and I'm not only a graduate from the Canine Companion, I'm a volunteer. September is National Service Dog Month and I can't stress the importance of the wonderfulness of these dogs that help myself and other people with special needs. They can help retrieve things that are out of reach. Some dogs are medical alert dogs. Others can insist on taking on and off clothes. This year for Canine Companion is a very special year as we are celebrating our 50th year in, in the organization. So again, Mayor Gomez and the city council, I thank you for honoring our dogs. Some heroes wear cades. Our heroes wear vests.
Thank you Nicole, Gage. Thank you. And Marcy, sorry about that.
The little one, she's four and a half months old.
Okay, tell us more about Marcy.
Marcy is four and a half months old. Her trainer is, her puppy raiser is Terry O'Connell. Terry has been in the organization for 25 years and I believe that Marcy is her 15th or 16th dog, 16th dog that she's raised. These, the gentleman on the other side laying down with the blue vest is Gage and he's my daughter's service dog. He's been in service for four years now. He'll work for another six, he'll be retired and she will take, another dog will be assigned to take his place. And he's going to retire with a lot of dignity in, and because he knows how much he's loved. What people don't realize is that these dogs pick the people they want to serve. If the dog wants to serve you, he will pick you and he will train you to work with him. And for 50 years, Canine Companions has done a wonderful job putting these dogs out to help those in need. And we give a lot of thanks to Charles and Jean Schultz, the creator of Peanuts and Charlie Brown, because he developed and started the organization 50 years ago. So thank you Mayor Gomez, thank you to the Tamarack city council, thank you to the city of Tamarack for offering our dogs and all service dogs this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Say cheese. To get up? You're not. Please keep seated and the city manager has something to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. This is very fine print. I'm going to try to read this. You're really good at this. But, well, I want to welcome our fire rescue personnel here tonight and we're going to honor our longtime friend and great chief Mike Anisi on his way out for, for the next chapter in his life. So we're looking forward to seeing the wonderful stories coming from you. But before you do that, would you please come down here and join us? So Mike, I have a proclamation for you.
No more dancing.
Do you have it up there Jim? Okay, so let me give this a shot. But this is requested by me, Levant Sujolu. Whereas Fire Chief Michael Anisi faithfully served the city of Tamarack Fire Rescue Department for over 27 years, beginning his career as a firefighter, paramedic in 1998 and rising through the ranks to serve as fire chief in 2022. And whereas Chief Anisi has shown unwavering commitment to public safety and excellence, earned a master's in disaster preparedness and executive fire leadership and the prestigious executive fire officer resignation from the National Fire Academy. And whereas throughout his distinguished career, Chief Anisi has held leadership roles including fire lieutenant, battalion chief, assistant chief of operations, deputy chief and interim fire chief, where he provided oversight of shift operations, training, emergency preparedness and administrative leadership. And whereas Chief Anisi has been honored with awards including the Excellence in Leadership and North Star Awards and served in professional organizations such as the Florida Fire Chiefs Association and the National Training and Safety Officers Association. And whereas Chief Anisi has made significant contributions to the city of Tamarack by spearheading initiatives such as ISO recertification, CPAC accreditation, implementation of the fire assessment fee, well, we could skip that, and guiding the acquisition of critical fire rescue equipment and vehicles. Whereas under his leadership, Tamarack Fire Rescue excelled locally and statewide, most recently earning first place at the First Care Conference at the Seminole Hard Rock, competing against 30 elite teams and showcasing the department's strength, skill and professionalism. Whereas Chief Anisi has consistently exemplified teamwork, mentorship and a commitment to developing future leaders, leaving behind a legacy of professionalism, integrity and dedication to residents of Tamarack. Now therefore I, well, you, Michelle J. Gomez, Mayor of the city of Tamarack, Broward County, hereby recognize Chief Anisi for his distinguished career and legacy of service and proclaim September 10, 2025 as Chief Michael Anisi Day. So. So Mike, before we, you know, hand over the microphone to you, I know you're used to this in your earlier years of fire service. And so that, you know, you stay in your familiar surroundings, we have this, you know, unique gift for you. So if you ever get bored, you can ring the bell. On behalf of the entire city, this is for you. Congratulations. Happy retirement and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you all so much.
You want me to hold this?
Yeah, why don't you hold it? This thing's heavy. Thank you so much. It's an honor and a privilege really. It has been tremendous. This career has gone by very quickly. One minute you start out, you're fresh, you're new. I still feel like I'm a new guy. I know it seems crazy, but it's amazing and then it's gone and it's over. So I implore all you to enjoy your career. Really, I have nothing but great things to say for Tamarack Fire Rescue. These people out here, they're the true heroes. They are the absolute best. They made, they made my job easy really to be, to be the chief here and be the leader. They lead themselves. They're exemplary. They're fantastic. They make me proud every day out there. They'll continue to do that. I'm honored to see that we had two folks that applied within and I'm really pleased to see that this department will probably stay in good hands with the folks that are here. So I can't thank you enough. The mayor and commission, thank you all for your support. You have all been fantastic. Thank you so much. Levant, your leadership has been fantastic. I've enjoyed working with you and thank you so much for everything.
Thank you so much.
It's been wonderful and thank you all. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
was good to see you. Alrighty.
Madam Mayor.
So, yes. Would you like to do the introductions? Go for it.
Yes, please.
City Manager, all yours.
We just had a great reception for, for our incoming. So we had a great reception just ahead of the commission meeting for our incoming captain, Captain David Franks. And I want to welcome him again to this community and to our beautiful city. We're looking forward to working with you. And tonight is your first commission meeting and first BSO report. So we welcome you and we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate. Just want to start, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, staff and citizens of Tamarack. My name is Dave Franks. I'm the new captain of the city of Tamarack. I stand before you today feeling both humbled and honored to have been chosen as the next extra chief for the city of Tamarack.
Oh, you're still going to do your report?
I'll do a little bit.
Oh, okay, you had to get a jail free card for a minute. It's all yours, go for it.
That's okay, I just want to start a little bit because there's some really good news here. One of the things that we talked about with the crime and everything else, that we have gone down 9.5%, which is amazing. And one of the ones that over the last month, last month was a little rocky for the violent crime, but we went down 31% from July into August. And I think that's a testament to the work that's done here by the deputies that are getting out there. I know it was a concern for the DIA's and I know that they've gone out there and they're really trying to address these types of concerns that are out there for the citizens. And I know we've, you know, the 86 crimes, but even still, it's a good way of looking at where we need can put our deputies and get out there and start addressing the crimes that are out there. And that's one of the things I see in here, that we can look at the stats, look at what's going on, and still then bring the crime rate down. And we can only go even further down, that's what my goal is to do here. Citations, which most people don't enjoy getting, but on the better side, it is out there as an educational tool. The citations are there to educate the drivers as well as let them know that they can't be out here speeding on the streets of Tamarack. They can't be out there doing things that they're not supposed to do because we have children, we have people riding their bikes, nobody can do that. And here we are now, and with our citations, and the increase in citations, I believe is about 632 more than last year, which is just absolutely amazing and a testament to the deputies and the traffic unit that's out there. And with the calls for service, of course, sorry about the drop. One of the things we want to do, and I know that's big for them, is visibility. And we have been going out there and doing our park walk and talks, and it's huge. This is the opportunity for our deputies to not only meet the business owners, the community, but to meet the people who come to the city, enjoy the city, and the stores and those things that are out there. And the deputies will continue to go out there, I'm looking to increase those numbers, through different ways. It doesn't always have to be park, walk, or talk, we have the availability and I'm going to try to get this started for the bicycles to be out there now. These are the kind of things that we really need to get out there and be with the community and show them that we are their hometown law enforcement, that they can come to us, tell us their problems, and we will solve their problems. This is what we're here to do. And with the numbers that are increasing, I believe on the park walk and talks, we've increased about 396 park walk and talks since last year. And that's what's great, is it's just more opportunities to get out there for the citizens to see us and the work that we do, and the work that we can do for them. There's been some great real arrests out there and I wanted to kind of talk about, I'm going to brag about our CSD team, amazing team, amazing. They're not just out there to be the drug busters and all that kind of stuff, they're looking at what the problems are, they're looking at who the problems are, and they're taking that to the next level. So, our CSD team went out and found a stolen vehicle that was tied to multiple crimes here in the city. They found out where it was, they set up on it, and when they left, they made the arrest. They got the person for drug charges, they got him for possession for the grand theft auto, but the best part was, we is now in custody for robbery and another eight cases out of Oakland Park. So, they come over here, we're going to let them know, you don't come to Tamarack and you don't sit there and try and commit crimes anywhere else and try to come here to Tamarack, you're going to go to jail. Another one was a burglary suspect, found out where he was, CSD set up on him, they made the arrest on him. We've arrested for firearms, for the large amounts of narcotics, and then on top of it, our CSD team's getting out there and they're going to the communities, they're going to the places, Lakeside Plaza, they're going to Sunshine Plaza, they're doing those type of things, and they're taking enforcement to the next level. And now, we're going to even take that further with some new plans that I've got coming forward, that eventually will become to fruition. And the quality of life, again, the CSD team working on those quality of life issues, because it's not only about the crime, it's about what type of area we live in. We want to have a nice area to live in and make sure the quality of life issues are covered. And that's what it's about doing this. So, I'll open it up for any questions that you would have.
No, I'm just going to say I'm glad that I wasn't speeding up University this morning when I saw one of the officers with his laser gun, so, thank you very much and appreciate you and your team.
Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard. Commissioner Patterson would like to say something.
If I didn't have any questions, I just wanted to say welcome aboard Captain, we're excited to work with you. I'm excited to work with you as well.
Very excited, thank you, to every one of you.
There you go. All right, we are now going to our, well, nope, we're going to City Manager. Do you have a report?
Yes, I do, thank you Madam Mayor. Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. I do want to talk about the canal cleanup process and because of the season, we see increased concern from our residents about the canal situation and we often receive emails and phone calls about the appearance of the canal. So, I just want to give a brief, you know, overview of how the canal treatment in Tamarack works. And so, we treat our canals on a three-week cycle each month. An algae side is applied in week one, followed by a waiting period in week two while algae die and decompose naturally, and a follow-up treatment in week three. And during this time, algae is not physically removed, so you may see them during the process, but conditions typically clear by the third week. So, when you see some of the, when you see the first picture, you know, it's not that it's gone untreated, it's being treated, but it takes the process, you know, some time for it to clear and die and disappear. So, I just want to clarify that we do treat our canals every month on this cycle, so. We have a lot of events happening again in these, in this month. You can definitely join BSO and get a bite at Manino's Italian Restaurant, you can watch a movie at the Tamarack Community Center, you can catch a concert at the Sports Complex, and you can get CPR certified at Fire Station 15. Now, the timeline and calendar for all these events are on social media, on City's social media, and on the City's website, we have a great calendar. So, I urge everyone to join the City of Tamarack, you know, connect the website and social media and, you know, be part of these beautiful, exciting events. City Hall, City Facilities will be closed tomorrow in observation of the Patriot Day and so we'll be resuming the normal operations on Friday, September 12. And our next commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so very much. We are now up to public participation and the rules of the road are on the screen. For anybody who might be new, we don't like to intimidate or make anybody feel bad for what they're expressing, so if you agree with the person, just do some happy hands. If you're not happy with what they're saying, you could just do this, please. You have three minutes, please state your name and your location. If you don't want to give your address, please state the city or the county in which you live, and we don't share minutes here. So, it's for any item at this time that is not on the agenda, or you can speak on consent, or the other part of our commission meeting. Rafaela Garcia, did you wish to speak, or you just signed in? Good to see you. And forgive me if I mess up names, it's sometimes hard to read. Bell Chemise, Bell? B E L L, maybe E U? No? Okay. Garfield Stewart? Kate Johnson? And then we have Mark Goggan on deck.
Kate Johnson, Mainlands Four, good evening. A couple things about the budget that's coming up, I know there is a budget meeting Friday and you had an emergency budget meeting not long ago, but I have some concerns about the budget itself. First off, is there, is the budget posted on the website anywhere where it can be seen as to the changes that are going to be made to it? That would be helpful before the budget meeting. Some of the things that I'm hearing that are suggested that may or may not have been passed at the emergency meeting are things like 5% increase for commissioners who serve on a committee, that's part of your job. $1,000 for serving as Vice Mayor, who does nothing more than any other commissioner. Lifetime healthcare benefits, this is a part-time job, people who have full-time jobs don't get that. vested for retirement after four years, again, this is a part-time job. Increased city contributions to pensions, all of this seems like if you keep going this way, our city will be bankrupt or our taxes will go up. The last thing I want to talk about is charitable fundraising and money. What are the requirements, because many of the charities on your list do not meet state requirements for charities to accept funds. There should be, and I've said this before I even put my name on, there should be a procedure with a checklist for all charities to conform to. I have asked this before, but I still don't see that that is happening. So, although this is not about me, what is about me is the falsehoods that were said at the last meeting. I'm not going to address all of them. People who know me know my character and I do not have to defend my character to anyone. However, two things I do want to address. One, I am a citizen of these United States, I have the right to support whomever I wish in any election. However, I was not President of Mainlands Four and I did not put up any signs because that would interfere with my duty as President of Mainlands Four. Lastly, whenever this commission does anything selectively, as Commissioner Bolton told me, him going after me was selective persecution, you opened this city up.
Thank you very much. As Mr. Goggan is coming down, Ronald J. Wasserman is next.
Madam Mayor, may I make a public service announcement that Tamarack's FI-25 and proposed tentative FI-26 budget is on the City's website, tamarack.gov/budget.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mark Goggan, Tamarack League South, in the east section of town. One, I'd like to thank Mitch for his work that he's doing and don't pass that free carry-on. You talked about what happened in Utah, they passed theirs two days before today's shooting, unfortunately. Couple things from the meeting that came up after public speaking last time, the BSO special details. I, as a citizen, understand contracts with the police and the fire, that you do different special details and everything, it's on a time that isn't irregular shift, they're supposed to get that money, that's why it's in the contract. When I worked up north as the EMT, I up in Massachusetts, we got time and a half when we covered youth football games because it was required by state law. Ms. Daniels is a school principal, that is a big issue. When I got transferred down here in 91, I nearly had a heart attack after the first storm and we had to open up shelters to protect the residents of Tamarack and all of the county. And the school board charges us for janitors at time and a half, for kitchen workers at time and a half. That was, that is shameful that the school department does that. And if you're complaining of BSO doing it, look at the own school department, what they charge a nonprofit group to provide a service to the community. The other thing is, last meeting, if you weren't here, watch the show on TV, our city attorney needs to be doing his job. When commissioners are beating up on other commissioners, they, he needs to stop them. This isn't right. He's not doing his job, he's not paying attention, and he's not stopping things between commissioners and irate commissioners and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. As Ron Wasserman is coming up, I have a Tom H. Sandra Dennis, you'll go right after Ron, thank you. Oh, you're here for 7A, or you aren't public?
I'll ask you in a minute, sorry, go ahead. Good evening, my name is Ron Wasserman. For the record, I live at 577G Drive here in Tamarack, 33321. Dr. Daniel represents me. I've spent a number of years speaking before this commission, many of you know me, a lot of people who knew me have retired. Chief Anisi, we love you man, you've been so good to our community, you're the best. I'd just like to speak briefly, I've come before you numerous times recently, I've met the new captain, let's give the new captain a chance on what is going on. Many of you heard me complain about the 911 system. I dare any of you in this room to have to put up with 911 saying to you, "Sir, we have a car on the way and we're waiting for you." We're waiting for you. We called non-emergency, you didn't show up. We called emergency, you didn't show up. So, let's figure it out. I dare any of you in this room to have to look out waiting for the police to come to your house and they don't show up.
Good evening. My name is Ron Wasserman. For the record, I live at 577G Drive, here in Tamaraq, 33321. Dr. Daniel represents me. I've spent a number of years speaking before this commission. Many of you know me. A lot of people who knew me have retired. Chief Anisi, we love you, man. You've been so good to our community. You're the best. I'd just like to speak briefly. I've come before you numerous times recently. I've met the new captain. Let's give the new captain a chance on what is going on. Many of you heard me complain about the 911 system. I dare any of you in this room to have to put up with 911 saying to you, "Sir, we have a car on the way, and we're waiting for you." We're waiting for you. We called non-emergency, you didn't show up. We called emergency, you didn't show up. So let's figure it out. I dare any of you in this room to have to look out, waiting for the police to come to your house, and they don't show up. I'm looking here, and I'm looking over here, and I'm looking back here. What the heck? You know I'm upset, and I have every right to be. Why do I call the police about trespassing? Do you look at trespassing as a non-issue? Well, our home's been broken into three times. They trespassed before they broke into the house. Sorry for raising my voice. But my, oh my. Captain, I'm going to give you every chance in the world to help us. Sheriff Tony stood right over there, and he said, "Tamaraq, I'm going to protect you." Sheriff Tony! For those of you who say, "Here he goes again," I will never keep my mouth closed about these issues. My voice is my friend, and my voice is my enemy. Please help our small community. Small, 40 homes!
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
So, Ms. Dervis, you're here for 7A?
I'm here on, is 7A speaking specifically about enforcement that's happening with folks partnering in their, in the streets and their communities.
Yes. Okay, great. See, come on, we'll see you then. Sorry. So I have Patty Lynn next. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up for public comments that wishes to make a comment at this time for any item that's not on the agenda, or that is in consent or other? Seeing none, Ms. Lynn, you are our final speaker.
Thank you. Patty Lynn, Mainlands Eight. Farewell to Chief Anisi, he has been an excellent chief, but we have some nice people in the fire department standing in the wings, and we're, we're going to continue. Our guys are going to be good anyway. And Captain Franks, welcome aboard. I'd like to report. Our people are good in Tamaraq. Our deputies are good, they respond well, and, and I'm, I'm happy. I don't like to badmouth people when they don't deserve it. They've been doing a good job. They show up. Sometimes, sometimes things must happen for Ron there, I don't know what's going on. I would like very much for this commission to present themselves, because you represent the city, as being open-minded and welcoming every citizen speaking, not just the ones who are spouting your stuff. There's been some nastiness, some vindictiveness, and it's really beneath the dignity of an elected official. If you feel that way, you're in the wrong damn job. Just selective persecution. That was very, very terrible. That was really bad. I don't care what you say about me. It doesn't matter. The people that work here, all the firefighters, all the deputies, everybody in this whole building, and the people in the, in the Parks and Recreation Building, and the Engineering and Building Department, they are the nicest people in the world. I don't agree with them all the time. I don't agree with them a lot of the time, right, Tony? But they're nice. If they, if they're unhappy, maybe when I leave, they say to the person next to them, "Boy, I'm so sick of her." But that's okay. They're not telling the world on a microphone, on a recording, as an elected official. Because I'm sure that the public here that comes to speak are not the only ones that are treated so poorly by some people on this commission. I'm afraid, I'm afraid that the people that work here are, and they sure as heck don't deserve it. They do an excellent job. When people say, "Oh, I live in Tamaraq," they're not talking about you guys that they're so proud of. They're talking about the people they deal with every day, the workers. They're important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now go to our own commission reports. Commissioner District One, Commissioner Bolton.
No report, Mayor.
Commissioner District Two?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner District Three?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two items I want to announce. If you are a resident of Spring Lake Community in District Three, I will be hosting a community meeting for Spring Lake residents on September the 18th at 6:00 PM. So I welcome the residents in that community to join me. I will be joined by staff, will be there just to kind of do a bit of a listening session and hear what the concerns are in that community specifically. So if you live there, please join me, mark your calendars. If you know someone that lives in that community, please share that information with them. And then in October, I am thrilled to partner with Christine Elin Women's Health and Wellness Institute in bringing a mammogram truck to the city of Tamaraq and making free mammograms available to the residents here in the city of Tamaraq. So if you're over 40, and maybe you have not done your mammogram, I encourage you to get registered. Spaces are limited. October 27th from 9:00 to 2:00 PM at the community center. And you can call 954-597-3472 to get registered. You must register, spaces are limited. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, District Four?
Thank you. Yes. Once again, thank you for our fire department, for all that they do, for our chief that's leaving us. We love you, we will miss you, and we'll personally give you a call for about a month to give you updates and see how everything is going. Just wanted everyone to know about our initiative for fitness in District Four. We'll be having line dancing at Waters Edge Park. Please come out and join us, starting September 8th from 6:30 to 7:30. It's free for Tamaraq residents. You don't have to live in District Four to join us. Please come out and take some classes with me. I promise you won't be embarrassed, because I'll be the most embarrassed, because I have two left feet. So make sure you come out. It's a nice, fun way to exercise and learn how to do the latest line dance. I think the latest one is with the hat, the cowboy thing? See, I don't even know. So when you go to party, you won't be embarrassed, you can just jump out front and start dancing. Also, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, we'll be having local restaurants joining us, local Hispanic restaurants. This will be October 9th from 6:30 to 8:30 at the community center. We'll be having local restaurants food, we'll have a music. Once again, if you're like me, come learn how to do the meringue and salsa. Come on out. I see Ron laughing, I know you'll be there. Bring your wife. Teach us how to do it. And we'll also be having raffles and giveaway. Please come out and enjoy, let's celebrate our diversity in this great city of Tamaraq.
Thank you. That's going to be a lot of fun, Vice Mayor, the line dancing and also the Hispanic Heritage. And also, thank you Commissioner Patterson for your support and bringing in the mammogram van. I want to do another welcome to Captain Franks, and also thanks Sergeant Lucia for helping us this weekend. I was on our flight, and we had a little miscommunication with our detail that normally takes our veterans down to the airport. And he jumped right in, helped us out, and it was great, and our veterans got to the airport by four o'clock in the morning, 4:15 varies safely, and came home safely as well. Not saying happy retirement yet to Chief Anisi, because, you know, you have another couple of weeks, so maybe you'll change your mind. We'll see. It's a pleasure to support and celebrate the investiture of President Tori Alston, who is the eighth president of Broward College. His passion and determination with his team will help him achieve his mission to be the number-one destination for economic excellence. Proud to have attended the AFL-CIO Labor Day Ball. As a daughter of a 50-year electrician, I BEW Local 3 in New York, and my mother, 36 years, is an educator of the New York Board of Ed. I am definitely a proud union girl, and I support our unions. After Friday's budget meeting, this Friday at 7:00 PM, looking forward to seeing you with Move With the Mayor at community center, where we're going to do the little beep burners for an hour, it is free. Saturday, starting at 7:00 AM, a little bit early, but join us for our 5K Running on Tamaraq as we stretch at 7:00, and then run or walk, because I'll be walking, at Tepford Park on South Gate and Nob Hill. Also another free event, it'll be the second Saturday of every month, starting at 7:00. And we seem to do it rain or shine, so get a little wet, sweat a little bit, have a good time and fellowship afterwards. On the 17th, sorry for BSO, we're going to have a little bit of a conflict, go to BSO first, or go to us first at Colony West. It's Women on the Course at 6:30 to 8:30. It is free. It is to talk about women and golf, and how we can be just as strong as some of the men, and also is a good way to get social. You don't have to have any golf experience, again, that is free. And then happy to be doing an event with our property appraiser. He talks much faster than I am, believe it or not. Community Forum on D-Fraud, and that's also Tuesday, September 16th, 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the community center. Light refreshments will be had, served, and we will be able to have owner alert there and be able to help people with things on their property and the property appraiser. Ha-ha's for the ta-tas, October 11th, please look things up and join us there. I want to bring this to a little bit different of a story. Name is Todd Beamer. His name is a name, but it should also be associated with hero. These are his words on the phone with the operator before Flight 93 crashed. "It's all about faith, family, and responsibility." He could say, "To live is Christ, to die is gain." This day is to ponder the words of a hero, including let's roll. Todd. Hello, operator, listen to me, I can't speak very loud. This is an emergency. I'm a passenger on United's flight to San Francisco. We have a situation here. Our plane has been hijacked. Can you understand me? Lisa, exhaling a deep breath to herself, "I understand. Can the hijackers see you talking on the phone?" Todd, "No." Lisa, "Can you tell me how many hijackers are on the plane?" The operator and Todd exchange information, and she gets the FBI on the call, and detailed information goes back and forth. Todd, "Lisa, will you do something for me?" Lisa, "I'll try if I can." "Yes." Todd, "You have the same name as my wife, Lisa. We've been married for 10 years. She's pregnant with our third child. Tell her I love her. I'll always love her." "We have two boys, David and he's three." Andrew, he's one. "Tell them," and he was choking up, "tell them that their daddy loves them, and he is so proud of them. Our baby is due January 12th. I saw an ultrasound. It was great. We still don't know if it's a boy or a girl." Lisa, Lisa barely able to speak, says, "I'll tell them, I promise." Todd, "I'm going back to the group. If I can get back, I will." Lisa to Todd, "Todd, leave the line open. Are you still there?" Todd breathing a little heavier, "I've talked with the others. We have decided that we will not be pawns in these hijackers' games, in this suicidal plot." Lisa, "Todd, what are you going to do? We've hatched a plan. Four of us are going to rush the hijacker with the bomb. After we take him out, we'll break into the cockpit. Stewardess is getting some boiling water to throw in the hijackers' at the controls. We'll get them. We'll take them out, Lisa. Will you do one last thing for me?" "Yes, what is it?" "Will you pray?" So they prayed, including Psalm 23. And then all you hear is, "Are you guys ready? Let's roll." We need to remember tomorrow. September 11th is important. Everybody's affected by it somehow. So for us in the city of Tamaraq, thank you for taking it as a day off, but please make sure you're doing it to commemorate the lives of those we lost, celebrate those who've survived, remember those who are still suffering, and be very proud to live in this country, because we will never forget. Thank you. City manager, we are on the consent agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson?
Mayor, can we pull 5C?
Yes, we'll pull 5C. I need a motion to, or second to the motion to approve the consent agenda except for 5C.
Second.
Thank you. City clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson? Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5 to 0 as amended.
Thank you. We are up to 5C, TR 14273. City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
5C, Resolution of City Commission of City Tamaraq. Requesting approval to execute agreement with Digital Tech Computer LLC for a period from October 1, 2025 to September 30, 2028. Providing for two one-year renewals to provide administration process and receipt of payments associated with transportation emergency medical service. Patients on behalf of City Tamaraq find rescue department. Providing for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I need a motion and a second, please.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton, I have a second by Commissioner Patterson. Commissioner Patterson, did you have any questions?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Not sure, manager, if, if I should ask you the questions, because they're really business questions.
I can try.
Okay. Just had a couple of questions about the contract. It's my understanding that, based on what I read in the backup, so we've been in, we've been in relationship with this particular vendor since 99, from what I understand, or is it that this is a brand-new piggyback from Ferdinand Beach, or Ferdinand Beach?
So the agreement, this version of the agreement is brand-new piggyback from our San Fernando Beach contract, but it's the same vendor that we've been working with for all this time.
Okay, so we've been in business with them since 99, but we are changing the framework of our agreement, or perhaps maybe the scope, based, and we're using theirs?
That's correct.
Okay. So what I understood and what I read, and I just want for clarification, so we're paying them $300,000 to, to collect on services rendered. In addition to that, we're paying 4% for all funds collected, plus $1,000 flat rate for all Medicare claims. Is that accurate?
The, the $1,000 a month and, and 4% of net collections is, is accurate, but I'm going to ask for help on the $300,000 piece, just to be on the safe side. Or is it up to $300,000? Yeah.
Max.
Right.
Good evening, for the record, Mike Anisi, Fire Chief. I'm bringing down Chief Frazier also. He worked on this contract, and it's a maximum of $300,000. The other fees are basically built into that, that's how it comes up, so the max is $300,000. But Chief Frazier, if you want to come over and answer any further questions, he did work on the contract, so.
No, Chief, we want you.
I'm here too.
I'm only kidding, only because we want to make you work before you leave.
Okay, I'm working.
No, I'm only kidding. Okay, so, so, you know, and these are just, you know, I just want to understand from a business perspective, and these, you know, these questions are business-related questions. So subsection three of the agreement says that compensation shall not exceed $300,000 per fiscal year unless an amendment to the agreement is approved, but then later in the contract, there is a section, an amendment or addendum to the contract that says something to the effect of 4% plus, so it says a fee structure as follows, 4%, and here it doesn't speak to the 300, and so I wasn't clear, but it says 4% of net collected revenue for EMS billing services, $1,000 flat monthly for processing, 6% of collections, 3% of collections for MCO program. So can you just, so for sake of the record and clarification on compensation, we're paying up to $300,000 no matter what's collected?
The maximum amount that we would be paying would be $300,000. Normally, the, the fees come in at around $250,000, and we're talking about different avenues of collection, but we tried to go a little bit higher so that, you know, obviously we wouldn't have to go, go over what we're, what we're saying and stating that we're going to be spending. So whenever you talk about the fee schedule, there's, when it comes to Medicaid and federal funding, they cannot, they're not allowed to charge a fee. It's a federal law, they're not allowed to do it. So they charge $1,000 a month, because that is the only way they can do it. Now, combined with that, when you're talking about collections for EMS transports, as well as PEMT, which is another avenue of collected money, as well as MCO. Now, the three of them combined, and you're putting them all together, but the three of them combined would not exceed $300,000.
And how is that gauged, based on prior collection? Or is that based on?
Yes.
Okay.
That's based on the previous collections that we've had and anticipated revenue we have coming in. So a normal transport fee, we charge, depending on if it's a BLS, it's $600, ALS, $650, ALS 2, $700. They collect- ALS, six fifty, ALS two, seven hundred. They collect on that. We pay them, it's a regular fee, we pay them four percent. If it's in a, if it's a government like Medicare or Medicaid, they're not allowed to charge fees, it's a thousand dollars a month, which realistically, that we cover that quite frequently. And then whenever we start getting into P E M T, which is a acronym used for medical transports that we get residual back from the federal government at the end of the year, we file a report with finance. We get additional monies. They take care of the accounting for all of that. They take care of the billing. And our fees are, you know, probably less than half of what the other agencies in the county are currently paying.
Are our fees based on outstanding debt owed to the city, or are these fees based on?
No.
Okay.
Fees are based on EMS transports, initially.
You guys are projecting a, a, a number?
Now, for two thousand twenty-two, we paid ninety-two thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars, two hundred ninety-seven thousand. Twenty-three, we paid a hundred and six thousand, ninety dollars. Twenty-four, a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and nine. Now with that, we have revenue, this EMS transport fees. That's why we combine them all, because it's one company doing them all. Now, revenue-wise, for twenty-two, we had two million, one hundred and fifty, two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So you're looking at roughly, because of that, you have four percent of the transport, which like I said, we'd normal charge for BLS at six hundred dollars, which we are the lowest in the county at that fee. And an additional thousand dollars a month for the federal-type Medicare or Medicaid payers. Now, with that, in two thousand twenty-three, we collected two thousand, five hundred and thirteen, I mean, sorry, two million, five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. Twenty-four, we collected two million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven, and our projection, because of the fact they changed over to a new collection software called Ambulance Commander, were projected at three million, twelve thousand and ten dollars. And our outlay for the transports for twenty, for that, you know, like I said, for twenty-four, our outlay is one hundred and fourteen thousand, and our intake is two million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Okay, and so with respect to outstanding debt?
Mm-hmm.
What has been, because based on the numbers that you, I mean, it sounds like the collection rate is pretty high, but is that high?
We are, we are at seventy-six point seven percent, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so is, is there outstanding debt currently?
Yes.
And what does that number rate, like, what does that figure look like?
Since the inception of our EMS transports and our computerized system that they've been able to track, which goes back to two thousand eleven, you're looking at two, I'm sorry.
Thirteen million?
Thirteen million dollars, thirteen million, seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars since two thousand eleven.
So there's currently thirteen million dollars in outstanding debt?
Correct.
For fire services?
Since the inception, since two thousand eleven, since our, our computerized programming. Now, state law states that we can go back five years, but that's just in there for informational and whatever you guys want to do with that. You may.
What's the difference between this agreement and the prior agreement?
Nothing really, other than the fact that they, we put in a new software, they did in February of two thousand, of twenty-four, and it's called, like I said, Ambulance Commander, which is a different method that they've been doing it. We have had billing in one form or another, and they bought and sold each other for, you know, the companies changed names for many years. This is a extension. We decided to, previously, they used a different vendor for some of the MCO and P E M T money, and they, now Digitac's doing it all by themselves. They outsourced it. Now they're not. So that changed a little bit of the scope of the contract.
Okay.
Before, it was just transports.
Okay. I, I mean, I understand that we're presenting this item as a means to kind of maintain continuity with the contract, given consideration to the fact that the agreement is, has reached its expiration point, and I'm, I'm gonna support the item. I just think that, I mean, I feel like there might be a more, we would, we, we could potentially benefit from a solicitation in, maybe in the next, I, I don't know that I'm okay with a five-year.
You say solicitation. What are you, what are you referring to?
A competitive solicitation on vendors that maybe, you know, I don't know if there's a way that, I mean, I don't know who else is out there, right? I mean, if we've been with Digitac since ninety-nine, I, you know, I'm not the expert in the area, but I'm just, obviously, the numbers that I'm seeing and hearing do kind of raise a little concern, obviously, for, you know, purposes of just ensuring that, you know, we remain solvent as an organization. And if we've been using them from ninety-nine, and I get, you know, obviously, it's, it's, you know, it is easier a lot of the time just to kind of stick with what we've got. And like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with supporting the item today. It's, we're at, I think I saw September, two thousand twenty-five is when the contract terms, so we do need to move forward with the service. But I, you know, would ask my colleagues to consider a friendly amendment to kind of, to not, I don't know that we do this for five years, and if I'm not, I think if I read it, it's a five-year agreement.
It's a three with additional subcontracts attached to it.
With an automatic five years?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think that we should just, you know, obviously, I mean, if they're the best out there, then they're, they're the best. But if we haven't done the research and we haven't, you know, put a competitive solicitation out for the service, I think we would be doing ourselves as an organization a disservice. Potentially, there could be, you know, something or someone out there that could help us collect on what's outstanding and potentially, you know, maybe the rates are a little bit more competitive as well. But those are just my comments. I appreciate your, your assistance with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I'm gonna open this up for the public. Anybody wishing to make any comments or have anything they wish to say on this item? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. I'll just say, thank. Yes, you have anything to say, Commissioner?
No, Mayor. I mean, if, if it's the desire of the commission, we can, you know, you can definitely offer a friendly amendment for the term of the contract, and, and so we can, you know, look into a solicitation at the end of the, the contract term.
Okay.
Your call.
I think there would also need to be further discussion on that when it comes down to what it means to go after collections, because these are obviously Tamarack residents.
No, no, no.
We're not doing that anymore.
We're not talking about collections. We're talking about the, the term of the proposed contract for this evening, which is the billing services. And, 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 you know, if the commission would like to limit that term to one year, and then, you know, during that time, solicit new proposals, because this contract has been in place for so many years, you know.
Okay. Well, seeing no requests for that, city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor, part of clarification, yes, I did ask for a friendly amendment to the existing language.
Pause, I didn't hear that. Commissioner Bolton, you made the motion. Do you accept the friendly amendment for?
What's the amendment?
So I'm, I'm proposing that we modify the agreement and reduce the, the term from a, if it's three, is it currently three years? Okay, so I would say that we do a one-year term and, and require that staff put out a solicitation at the, at that, at the end of that term, let's see what we get. If they're the best, then they're the best. If they're not, then, you know, I think we have, and to the mayor's point, this is not, I know we've kind of been using that word, that word collections loosely. I'm just saying that from a billing standpoint, that we obviously, there is outstanding debt. You know, we talk about our budget regularly, and I think that, you know, we need to look at what else is out there and ensure that we're getting the best bang for our buck.
I'm gonna ask you, before you make any comments, if you don't mind, I see a team of people coming to the podium. Chief Anici?
Yes, we just wanted to make sure that you understand that this is a piggyback, so we'll have to, it's not something we can just change and make an amendment. Would have to start the whole process over again. This contract expires the thirtieth of this month, so. And I do want to point out, just a little side note, this is, we're, we're getting probably the best rate from this company in Broward County, and it's probably ten, fifteen other departments that are using them. It's very popular. It's kind of the common one to do, and I agree with you. Take a look at other things, other options. But this is probably the best vendor for this. If you want to do collections, not to mix up the two, the collections, the thirteen million, that outstanding is a separate service that they would not do. Digitac would not collect on that. It's a separate situation. So that would be separate to go collect, I say collections, but, but the company Digitac is probably the best one around. I mean, that's just to be known. A five, it's really a three and a one and a one. We kept it, that, we actually did keep it less. They wanted to do more, and we kept it lower because we wanted to, maybe took a look at what's out there in about five years. That's why we did that. Just want you to know that we'll have to redo the whole contract, which is where we're in a timely, time squeeze here a little bit.
The city attorney wishes to.
The friendly amendment that has been recommended in terms of reduction of years is permissible from a piggyback standpoint.
Yeah.
The, the business terms have not been changed. You know, the pricing is still the same, everything, but the reduction of years, you can do it under the law.
So, but as a point of clarification, I guess, Commissioner Patterson, is it the, I think some of the wording has been, there's debt collection, which is the thirteen million, which is separate and not part of this contract, and so?
No, we're saying that debt collection is not part of this contract.
Exactly.
That's a different service.
Right.
And we're saying regarding, regarding the piggyback, you have to understand that when we decide to piggyback, we choose a contract where they have gone out and have had responses, and it would be the same population as what we have gotten, and they use a competitive process to select the vendor. So that's when we would decide to piggyback that contract, because they use the same methodologies that we would have used if we were supposed to go out for a solicitation. When we piggyback, we negotiate the terms with them, and if we're going to change the terms, it's going to change something in the contract. So that's what we're referring to about changing the term at this point. We would have to go back and renegotiate.
So.
It is common that fire departments use the piggyback process, because they go out and they solicit all these vendors. They get the best competitive, it's all competitive, and they boil it down. And that's why we do the piggybacks, you know, often enough, because the work's been done by other departments that are larger and bigger. And so we piggyback on that to get the best deal.
Thank you, Chief. So, so when I, when I was doing my, my research based on what I was provided by the staff, what I read was, we've had this organization, this company for, since ninety-nine, we're piggybacking, same company. I didn't have any details around when Ferdinand Beach did their, did their agreement. There was no, there were no benchmarks. There was no data in the package. Nothing told me about return on investment. Nothing told me about, you know, there was no data.
Yeah.
So as a, as a decision-maker, if I understand that there is debt in this city, and we're saying we're gonna go with the same vendor that we've had from ninety-nine, and my backup gives me no numbers, I don't know how efficient it is. And so I, you know, manager through you, you know, I'm, I'm not comfortable. So, you know, I, I hear the, the concern of the staff. I hear the chief. But that's, I came, I studied my material, and I didn't have any of this information. So I'm not comfortable saying that we go into a five-to-eight-year straight agreement without any, essentially, because that's what it is. It's a three-year with an automatic five-year renewal.
Yeah, one year.
But it's automatic.
One year.
It is automatic.
And it doesn't have to be automatic. It could be just the three years, and then we go out.
Commissioner?
City attorney, go ahead.
Every, every agreement the city has has a termination. I say ninety percent for convenience. This agreement has it. Upon seven days' notice, you can terminate for convenience. So this, the term is not a lock-in term. So if, if the city wants to get out, it can get out.
Okay. Because I would say further, I don't know what the outstanding, I don't know how they're performing in Ferdinand Beach. I don't know, you know, again, numbers matter. Data matters, and, you know, I can't just, you know, blanketly just say, okay, let's just do it. Again, I wasn't clear on what we're paying them. You know, the, the way this was drafted wasn't a hundred percent clear to me. So with all that being said, you know, I, I kind of, if, if, if based on what the attorney is saying, we wouldn't breach the piggyback by modifying the term, then I would still be inclined to, you know, to ask my colleagues to support a, a friendly amendment, adjusting the term. And we put out our own, you know, our own solicitation based on our needs in our organization. And again, if it comes back that they're the best out there, then they're the best out there. But I, what, seeing something that says ninety-nine and we're in two thousand twenty-five, I mean, that was a little bit of a concern for me.
I accept the amendment.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolton, she, he accepts the amendment. Obviously, you would second the, the amendment. Commissioner Patterson, I do have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Christine or if it's for, sorry, our finance director, Chief Anici, one of you guys.
We're here.
We had a situation where we changed terms of a contract that we were negotiating, that had been negotiated from it being a year contract to a three-year contract, and it wound up being that the, before a shorter term, the terms changed. Putting it out there, it was our lobbyist, right? We had a year contract. I don't remember the numbers, just say it was eighty thousand dollars for a year. When we told them that we're gonna change the term and reduce the term to six months, it then went to a higher amount of money. And when we wanted to put it as a three-month, it went to a higher amount of money. So I understand, city attorney, while you're saying that it's not a material item, in light of what we've experienced, I am not a hundred percent sure that we can say that point-blank. So who can tell me without a, with complete certainty?
Mayor, the, the vendor can always, the vendor is well aware that if, if staff bring up a contract with commission, it's subject to commission review and approval. And it can be rejected, it can be approved, it can be modified. If they don't, I would say, accept the modification by the commission, they can obviously, you know, reject. That's up to them. But the commission has a right to also modify and the contract, and reducing the terms is not, I would say, destructive of the piggyback requirement.
I, I'm, I'm not saying that we don't have the ability to do so. My comments are basically, we should not necessarily minimize that it may not be a material item, and as you say, the vendor can then say to us, "Thank you, but go away." So I know you can't answer that question. Can you? I mean, you're not the vendor.
But I just wanted to mention that about five, six years ago, we, we did go out for solicitation, and we did have, do the whole process, and Digitac did win the contract back then as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. And if the Digitac should say we're not reducing it, then we are without a contract. Is that correct? Yes. And the responsibility for services then fall to whom? We don't know. Okay. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's gonna happen. I'm just asking the question. All righty. Seeing no further questions, city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
No.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes four to one.
All righty. We are now moving to our regular agenda. Six A, TR one four three one eight. City attorney, please read the title for the record.
I am six A. A Resolution of City Commission of City Tamarack, Approve and Award, Request for Proposal Number Twenty-five dash fourteen R. And authorize the city manager or designated negotiating and execute agreement between the City of Tamarack and Frangio Builders LLC for design, build of Saber Palm Park project in accordance with RFP twenty-five, number twenty-five dash fourteen R. Authorize and expense from appropriate accounts, providing for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
I knew you were doing so well. A motion by Commissioner Bolton and a second by Commissioner Patterson. Public comments are now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. Commissioner Bolton, you wish to have a comment on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
On Monday, we talked about eight million, up to fourteen billion. I noticed in the backup that there is a contingency budget of ten percent. While I understand that this is customary for a ten percent contingency, I'm still not convinced that the park would be built at eight million dollars, considering the commentary that was given on, on Monday. I don't know that we are pigeonholing ourselves with cost that says not to exceed the amount plus contingency. I don't know if the language can be changed, because on Monday, during the meeting, we did say we did say that staff was going to negotiate with the clients. There were some conversation about material being subpar and higher grade and all that stuff. And so I don't know that between Monday and Wednesday, that there were some negotiations. Again, I'm not pushing for a higher cost, but I want to make sure that the residents of District One get a quality park. They've been waiting nine years, and I don't want there to be a hiccup in the process. So that's just my concern with that.
City Manager?
Mayor, if I may, Commissioner, you're, you're absolutely right. So this resolution is for the city manager and team to negotiate, and not just negotiate, but also to, you know, identify the elements of, well, not the elements, but, but identify the, the, the level of design elements in the, in the, in the project, and come up with a cost. So as I mentioned on Monday, this number may go down, may go up. And, and, and so that conversation, that conversation with the, with the builder has not been had yet. So you're, you're absolutely right. I think we should, if we may, change that language and, and, you know, and, and say, subject to further negotiation or results of negotiation as authorized by this resolution.
And by all means, try to go less, but I'm just saying that, you know, I, I just don't want to have some sort of issue down the road.
That's a conflict, Madam Mayor, with the intent of the resolution is, is to authorize the city manager to negotiate, but if we're limiting that to not exceed that, that, that figure, it, it kind of intuitive.
So the request is to remove section, part of Section Four? What, is that what's?
Is, is, is to remove, you know, not to exceed term and, and, and say, you know, this was the bid amount, and, and it's subject to.
It would be basically remove Section Four, as you indicated, Mayor.
Removing Section Four?
Yeah.
Okay. But, um, I'm just seeing if Commissioner Bolton is done with, done? Okay, Vice Mayor?
No, I was disagreeing, based on our conversation on Monday, because the Director of Public Service, Mr. Mustafa, he stated that the, the vendor for 14-plus million was the only vendor that agreed to everything that the city wanted, at the level that the city wanted. We went ahead and chose the lowest bidder, with the caveat that they would negotiate to get the better products that the city wanted. So I think if you do limit it, maybe we won't get the better products. So, you know, I'm in agreement with that. Because the quality that the 14 million was suggesting was the quality that the city wanted, but the price was double. Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna ask a point of clarification to the Vice Mayor, please. And I'm just playing devil's advocate, trying to figure it out. So if we said no to the 14 million, which had everything that we wanted, but we don't have a limitation on the 8,000, how do we know that the 8,000, who gives us 800,000, 8 million? You know?
I guess what we, what we decided, what, well, my thing was, don't pass that for sure. I don't know if you remember the conversation, but I said we cannot exceed the 14 million. But if they're willing to negotiate, I'm sure we're gonna go below the 14 million.
Well, that's my, my, my wonder is if we still need to put a cap on it, because if we wind up going up to the 14 million, why didn't we just stick with the one that had the 14 million and no? I, I'm, I'm not out of.
I think because this company was more willing to work with us, was that it? And the price was, the price was cheaper, they came in second as far as approval. But the price, price was 8 million compared to 14 million, that's a big difference.
Right, but my concern with what, is wouldn't there be some kind of cap? Because you don't want.
Right, and I said, as long as they don't exceed the 14 million, right? Because I'm not sure, I think someone mentioned about vendor, depends on the vendor you purchased it from. I think you did, you said something about Sheen. So we don't want to buy from Sheen, right? Because it might not be the right quality. But I, I don't know, this is why the city, the experts are gonna negotiate.
City Manager?
And, and absolutely we will. And, and, and Vice Mayor, I want to assure you that all four vendors that presented, they offered the products that qualified or that matched the requirements that the city asked for. Now, because we did not specify necessarily it's gonna be a Ford F-150 truck, white and, and, you know, with lights on, and because it, it was not specified, we just said, we need a truck with four wheels and, and, you know, this many horsepower. One was 8 million dollars, one was 14 million dollars. Now we have to sit down with the builder and, and define that truck to further detail and, and make sure we get the best quality that we'll, we'd like to have in that park.
Yeah, I think when I looked at the engineer's face, he was more, the 14 million was like a Lamborghini, a Bentley.
We don't know, we, we.
That's how, that's the reaction I felt.
So, you know, I can't tell if, if this grass is better than the other grass, but, you know, we'll find out.
Oh, so it might not be under 8 million, it might just be right? Okay.
Commissioner Wright?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. In, in looking at my notes from Monday's discussion, I think RDC, which came in at 14 million, we kind of said, they along with Frangio, Frangio, however, English or Spanish, had, you know, same, same experience, their design was well thought out. I think Frangio also had a local Tamarack resident. They had, they had contractors who were local, they had a foundation. So we basically judged the experience, the team, and the people in the presentation. And for the money, Frangio was more or less the same as RDC. However, RDC was a lot more expensive, and I think that's why we kind of all agreed on Frangio. And then the nuances was the cost, we know, it might be a little higher, but the team that they presented was definitely the same as, as RDC. And as I mentioned, as half the price. So at 8 million, and City Manager, you're saying that there's gonna be a cap? They can't exceed what amount? Because the other company, Waypoint, they were 10.5, and the Pompeo was 11.7. And Pompeo said, no change orders on this project, those are some of their, their, their positive points. So in comparing those companies, is Frangio gonna agree to some of those things?
By, by qualifying to this point, they are accepting the requirements that we put out there. So they're accepting that for 8 million dollars and some change, they're willing to construct the park that we specified in our RFP. So that's the, the, the commitment on, on their part. Now, what's gonna be, what's gonna be some, some change in, you know, factors? Maybe in the, during the design process, they'll come back to us, and, and, and the commission may ask for different elements in the, in the look and feel of the, the park. We may see some other benefits in doing some things in a little different way, and those things may make a difference. But essentially, they're obligated to provide all amenities, all elements of the park that we specified in our RFP document for that price.
And you also mentioned a park is not something complicated in terms of building. And going to what Commissioner Bolton mentioned as well, you know, he wants to have something good in his district. And what I look at with Frangio and RDC is the presentation of their design. You know, in the technology world I work in, in marketing, you judge people based on the design of their website, things like that, seeing their skill set. And these two guys actually had great designs, even though all of them used the same fitness company for the open park. It's more or less the same vendors that they're using. When it came down to the design, their presentation of what they presented and what it would look like, it was very thorough, and it was well-designed. And also looking at the other parks that they work on, for instance, Frangio, they work on El Prado Park in Fort Lauderdale, and also the stadium in Fort Lauderdale, which are modern, innovative places. So those were the things that were attractive about them as well, in addition to their pricing. But you mentioned that a park is not complicated, so the price for, for what we're paying is not like they're gonna go up to 14 million.
And, and, and that's, that's one side of it. And the other part of it is that this is a design-build process, which means that, that at this point, we're gonna sit down with this company, and we're going to go through a design process. The, the elements are gonna be the same, a basketball court, a, you know, a playground, and, and a dog park, and, and those amenities are going to be delivered as part of this package. But the design, you know, we will work with them, we will sit down with them, it'll come to you, and, and will be part of that design process. And that's the, the benefit of this, this, this methodology, this approach. And then they'll go ahead and construct it.
Well, I'll punt to the District One Commissioner, it's gonna be his legacy. I know when he sits down and beats in Trinidad 20 years from now, he wants to imagine that, you know, there's a great park that he left there and a legacy that he, 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 he left, so.
And we're not gonna settle for anything less than excellent, you know, in the, in the design and, and construction, so.
Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to just make one quick point that, I, I guess if we were, even if we were to amend the agreement to remove the not-to-exceed amount based on what the city budgeted for the project, we're still well below, at least 1.7 million dollars below what we were budgeted at. And then even with that, $550,000 less than the second lowest bidder. So, I mean, I would support a request to revise the language, the, the not-to-exceed language, to at least, you know, put us where we were at budget, if not, you know, I mean, we, we have, there's more than enough room here. I think that they came in at baseline, to your point, prepared to give us exactly what we asked for in the RFP. And one of the, one of my favorite things about the organization was that they were willing to give us the park that we want. Everyone else presented a park that they thought that we should have. And, 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 you know, obviously not to forget and mention that they were prepared to do outreach and, you know, work with the commission and deliver a park that would be best suitable for the city, and the fact that they have done national projects. So, you know, their creativity, I think, was bar none compared to the other organizations, because everyone else pretty much has done work here locally. So I, 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 those are just my comments on the item.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yeah, I'm just saying that we, we understand that we're going to build a park, we understand the vendor. We just want to give staff the leverage to negotiate. Price, quality, product, add subtract, all the elements, whatever they, they want. You know, the, the budget that you have is going to come back to us anyway. We're going to see it in the end. So for now, just strike the language, and, and that gives staff the, the, the maximum leverage or flexibility to come back with what they have.
So I agree with Commissioner Patterson that we should have a cap at least going up to the maximum of our budget, or else why do we go with the lowest bidder? I, I see that it can only go higher exponentially. And as I said on Monday, while I agree that it's a park, we need to keep in mind it's a former golf course. And I think people remember the excitement over other golf courses being remediated. So I would expect that same kind of expectation of the golf course being remediated quite well. One thing that they, I'm not saying this group can't do it, but that costs a lot of money to remediate. And since we don't necessarily know what that'll be, on top of deciding whether we want a fully-loaded F-150, or do you want the base model, right? So I think that there should be some parameters, or the next thing you know, we're going to be doing a 14 million dollar item, being presented a 14 million dollar item from Frangio. So I do think that there needs to be a cap put in there, and we can always decide if it needs to go up later. That's just my opinion.
May I?
Go ahead, City Manager.
So you're absolutely right, but the, the, the budget that the city commission approved, and that's in our books, is the natural backstop for this, uh, top, uh, top of this line, as, as, as you all mentioned. So it, it exists, and we cannot go over that number. So for us to go over that number, we have to come back to you, you know, with an amendment, they change, whatever. But feel free to add that to the language, or leave it, you know, it exists.
Considering that this city is very used to budget amendments every six months, between November and April, or whatever it is. Anyway, so there's no friendly amendment that I'm hearing. If there's nothing further, City Clerk?
I, I made a friendly amendment.
No, you, you have the amendment.
Your amendment was not a friendly amendment.
We, we are deleting Section Four.
You delete Section Four, that's, that's already what it is. The friendly amendment was whether or not it was going to have a cap in there of not to exceed the budget amount that this project already has.
Section, Section Four is where the budget is, so at the.
No, no, Section Three. Section Three.
So, okay, so we.
Section, basically, the manager, by operational law, there's a budgetary amount for this park. He cannot exceed unless commission approve. So that operates. So Section Four is the, is the cap limitation on the contract, that's what we're eliminating.
Okay. And so I'm gonna ask for a clarification. You're saying Section Three, without any further wording of not to exceed, is understood by Frangio? Or whomever we're contracting to them, that that's a cap?
Yes, it's the budget. Unless he, the city manager requests a, a budget amendment to exceed that amount, like all capital project, he has to come back to the commission. Yeah. He has to. Okay.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gomez?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five to zero, as amended.
Thank you. We are now going to ordinances on first reading, 7A TO 2602. City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
Item seven, ordinance, City Commissioner, City Tamarack, amendment, Chapter 14, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article Two, Stop and Stand in and Park in Section 14-26, Parking Restriction, Public Rights Away, to provide a community-driven mechanism to manage parking restriction enforcement and public rights away citywide, amendment, Section 14-37, entitled Parking Violation Enforcement, to provide for public education period prior to administration enforcement of this ordinance and the on-street parking policy, provided for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, I need a motion in a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton, I have a second by Commissioner Wright. This item had a full presentation at the staff workshop on Monday, September 8th. Our Deputy City Manager, Maxine Callaway, is available to answer any questions. At this time, I'm opening public comments, I already have a few people who have signed up. So we'll go with Kate Johnson, Mark Goggan, and then Sandra, is it Dervis or Davis?
Dennis.
Dennis, sorry. So you'll be third, and then anyone else who wants to speak there, Patty Lynn will be after.
Kate Johnson, Mainlands Four. I have to say that I am extremely confused over why this is back on the docket again. We spent years getting this put in place. We spent years getting it to go from 2:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight to start, and to start getting it enforced. A code enforcement officer was actually put in the budget and hired to enforce this code. And now you're talking about, well, we'll enforce it in some places, but we won't enforce it in other places? I see that Mainlands Four is on the list of exemptions. Great, but what about Mainlands One and Two? What about Mainlands Five? What about all of the other ones? We have a sign, when you come into Mainlands One, Two, Three, Four, and Five, that says, no parking overnight. But now we're just gonna do away with that? I have talked numerous times about the issues with parking in the street. I was driving down my road the other day, and. I was driving down my road the other day, and I was dealing with a crisis. It was daytime. I could not get through my road, because cars were parked on both sides of the road. Thankfully, it was daytime, I slammed on my horn, somebody came out, moved one of the cars. That's not gonna happen at night. When you have narrow roads, and you have an ordinance to take care of that, how can you selectively enforce an ordinance? Because if it was me, the first thing I'd be doing when I got a ticket was coming back to this commission and saying, "Why are you selectively enforcing this law against me, and not those people?" You open, again, I've said it before, you open yourselves up when you do things selectively. So, I've talked to others in my neighborhood, they all asked me to enforce that we do not want to see this go away. We want to see the code enforced as it is written, without exception. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Goggan from Tamarack Lakes South, but I also have a point of representative for sections 1 and 2. As Kate said, this has been discussed again, and discussed again, and discussed again. I understand for District 3 and 4, you're a newer section of town, you have bigger roads, a little wider. I know that, I do a lot of Uber driving throughout the city of Tamarack and Cold Springs, and driving through some of those streets are a lot easier than driving through the streets on the east section of town. In your exemption, after searching through the back documents, on page 730, you had the listing of those exemptions, of those communities. It came up for both Tamarack Lakes South and Tamarack Lakes, Section 1 and 2, down off of Prospect. Why weren't we listed on that? We've had the rule, I moved into Tamarack Lakes South in 2000. The rule was there before I moved in, because it was explained to me when I bought a house in there, and I had a sign that I understood the rules, that there was no parking at night on the street. We still have it, we've updated it. We sent back when Chief Glassman was here in the city of Tamarack, our updated rules for the parking in the community. We got back from the traffic officer that was assigned to Tamarack, some additional stuff to assign there. There were state rules regarding parking in these communities. If you have double yellow lines in your community, at the intersections and everything, it's a state law that they can't park there, that needs to be enforced as well. Our community of Tamarack Lakes South and Tamarack Lakes, Sections 1 and 2, and since I've been on the board in 2001, and ever since, our two communities work together on a regular basis. We have our same attorney for the two communities. We work together on doing the rules, so that one community can't say, "Well, they don't do it in that community." Our rules are very similar for both of our communities, and we have this no parking exemption into them. That needs to be staying, or us adding to this list. This law should not be passed the way it's written, unless you add our two additional. And I do have a copy of the letter from Dawn from Tamarack, Section 1 and 2, that I'll give to Ms. Conway, because I emailed, a big email to them the other night, explaining to her and the city manager, our proposal that we need to keep this, because we can't drive down the street half the time, the school buses can't get through at 7:00 in the morning, and I can't get through sometimes because of two houses down the end of my street. But here, the city sign that the city put up in one community.
Thank you. Ms. Dennis? And then Patty Lynn.
Hello, my name is Sandra Dennis. I'm a homeowner in Mainland Section 10. I'm actually here today, I work in Miami-Dade County, and I've been living in Tamarack for five years now. I'm actually here to thank Vice Mayor Daniel for actually responding to the concerns around parking in Mainland Section 10. Tamarack is a growing city, what used to be much more of a senior citizens community, there's much more families, and so the parking restrictions also do have a burden on some of us who do have multi-vehicle homes. In my community specifically, it is not only folks who, just because people are there past 12, doesn't mean they're necessarily staying over, but I also know in my community, there are driveways that only fit one car, and many of the homes that way. And so, if you have any children, if you have a partner, the homes are not built to have multi-vehicle cars in that driveway. And so, if people are being ticketed, I believe that to be predatory, and I don't think that's fair for people who live in Tamarack, who have families specifically in my district. I also wanted to talk about some of the driveway. We got notices that we needed to make updates on our driveway after years of the driveway in front of our homes, not necessarily being paved. And when we got that notice, it was during hurricane season. I think that the city of Tamarack should be specifically really cognizant of the cost that it takes for homeowners to make repairs during hurricane season. It's an expensive season, people do take advantage of these seasons, because people have to make repairs. The notice period was not sufficient enough for people who wanna upkeep their homes, wanna keep their property values up, but didn't necessarily have the significant time when enforcement started happening. And then the notice, it started to say, based on the codes in the city, that people will start getting fined $250 a day for not updating their driveway within, I believe, a two-month period. I thought, again, that to be very predatory, this is how people lose their homes. I myself made a tremendous sacrifice, because I have the privilege to be able to come here this evening, but I know many of my community members wouldn't, don't necessarily have that amount of time, so I wanna see much more of a participatory process around what can be, what could be community-proposed solutions to the issues that we're experiencing around parking. I absolutely believe it's a safety issue, but I also know that there are families in Tamarack who have single driveways, who cannot, don't have any other choice but to park their home, their cars in the, on their streets. And so, I think, community by community, we can develop what some solutions could be to address the specific issues in each community. I appreciate you, Vice Mayor Daniel. I haven't had the chance to come here, because I do work down south, but I appreciate your responsiveness and the ability for us to come to a shared conclusion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item after Patty Lynn? Seeing none, then public comments will be closed after Ms. Lynn.
Thank you, Patty Lynn, Mainlands 8. We have a law in the books that we fought long and hard to get. And then, when the law was put on the books, people were giving ample enough time to please widen your driveways. Yes, it's expensive, but that's the cost of owning a home sometimes. You have to pay to be there. The law has been here forever about parking between 12 and 6. And then we changed it, it was between 2 and 6, then we changed it to 12 and 6. But the law was the law, was the law, was the law. When Captain Cooper was here, I had him please checking all the time at 64th Avenue and Northwest 57th Court. The problem still exists for people trying to leave the community. There are two to three cars parked within 500 feet of the intersection. You have to go on the other lane if someone's coming in and makes the turn. You're gonna have, we've had several accidents there. We fought for this law. Why is it that some people can keep it, and we can't? Because we don't have it in our documents? We have it in our rules, but our rules are not documents? What is the big deal about changing it? Why is it being changed? That's my question. We fought, we came, everybody came, and they agreed, and things were good for a while. Now they're going to hell in a handbasket again. It's unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments are now closed. Commissioner Wright.
Ms. Callaway, I think, Mayor, I recall very well mentioning to include Mainlands 8 and 9. I know the Woodlands, Mainlands 8, Mainlands 9, those are the communities that want this to be enforced, and I was adamant about those communities. I see the Woodlands, but I don't see Mainland 8 and Mainland 9.
Commissioner, we can certainly add those.
Yeah.
So, as you know, this was discussed extensively during the June workshop, and we were directed, staff was directed to come back with these changes, and to come forward with a mechanism that would allow communities to get involved in what happens in their neighborhood. And so, what's being proposed is the parking policy that would allow communities who are not listed already, and who want to have parking enforcement by 55% vote of the residents, one home, one vote, to be able to institute that, and also be able to lift that.
If you check your notes, you'll see Mainland 8 and 9.
I can add that, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah, Mainlands 8 and 9, because Patty Lynn has been adamant about it. So, not Woodlands, and, yeah, Mainlands 8.
Mainlands 8 and Mainlands 9?
Yes.
And for the record, I can just list off all the communities, or I can just wait to see if there's any other changes from any members of the commission? Okay.
Commissioner Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor, through the manager, Ms. Callaway, sorry. Can you just say it again for the people in the back that don't understand what this policy is saying necessarily? Can you clarify so that they have clarity around what this says, and what it does?
Certainly, Commissioner. So, we are making a change in the code. What it currently, the code currently provides for a restriction, meaning that we would enforce, there's no on-street parking allowed anywhere in the city between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 AM. During the retreat in June, we were directed to make that change, so we are lifting that restriction. Parking would be allowed in the city, with the exception of those communities that the commission already told us that they wanted to have on-street parking restricted. Those communities are in the policy that is attached to the ordinance, and they're listed, and the commissioner just added two more communities to that. If a neighborhood, as defined by the policy, would like to have on-street parking in their community by a petition of 55% of the residents of that community, then that restriction would be enforced by the city. Likewise, if a community who has a restriction on, but would like that restriction to be lifted, and to have on-street parking in that community by 55% of the residents, they're able to lift that restriction.
Thank you. So, what we're saying is that we're still enforcing, but we're also taking into consideration that this is, there's not a one-size-fits-all approach to how we address parking in our city, because to the resident, one of the residents that spoke, the west side of the city has wider streets, maybe newer homes, while maybe the east side of the city has a different infrastructure. And so, someone else spoke to the fact that there, you know, we were once a little bit more of a bedroom community, while now we've got 43-year-old median age in our community, where there's more kids, more families. So, I think what this commission decided to do was look at an approach that would consider all of our residents. And I love it, I think this is fair. I think personally, as the district representative, I received several phone calls for folks who live in communities in my district, who unfortunately are subject to smaller driveways, who did not like the enforcement mechanism, and who weren't complaining about their roads. And so, I think this is a fair approach. If a neighborhood wants enforcement, they just need to petition their community, get 55% of the folks to agree, and voila, you get enforcement. If you don't want it, you don't have to have it. I think that is democracy. So, I appreciate that staff brought this item. I have a couple of questions, though, relating to the process. I didn't see in their enforcement of vehicles without valid tags, derelict vehicles parked on the right-of-way, maybe vehicles with cover, that are covered, flat tires on the right-of-way. Does this address that?
This ordinance does not, but that is already in the code, it's under a separate section. So, this amendment does not address that.
It would seem like they should be complimentary. If you're enforcing parking on the right-of-way, you know, for one reason or the other, it would seem like that would, you know, we might wanna pull that so that whoever's doing the enforcement doesn't skip over it, because they're looking for one particular issue per this ordinance. But that would just be, you know, that was something that stood out to me. The other question becomes, obviously, every neighborhood is a little bit different in size. And so, how would the community know what the number is, the magic number, is to achieve 55% in the event that community is interested in enforcement?
Yeah, and so, we would help them based on the definition of neighborhood, and that was a tough one, Commissioner. We wanted to make sure we had a broad definition of neighborhood. So, if there is a small HOA community that, for example, had three or four streets, then staff would determine that that's a neighborhood. So, we instituted, and we included in the policy, a definition of neighborhood that included, it can consist of a subdivision, homeowners association, a group of contiguous residential properties with shared characteristic and boundaries. And so, we wanted to make sure, once a community or resident reach out, and they'd like to submit a petition, then staff would help them in, to define what that neighborhood is in that community, because it might vary, depending on the makeup. So, that definition is in the on-street parking policy, which is Exhibit 8.
Okay. I think I noted a conflict under your definitions for resident vote. It says one vote per home, per property, regardless of ownership status or number of residents. But then in your note, it says, for purposes of validating the petition, each property is entitled to one vote, regardless of the number of owners or residents.
Right, and that is for verification? So, we would verify on Broad County Property Appraiser. We wanna make sure that that vote is coming from someone who owns a property.
But I think the definition says regardless of ownership, so it seems like a conflict there.
All right, so we can.
So, yeah, if we're saying like the vote, we're saying vote defines as it's regardless of who owns it, but then we say that we need to verify, I think we might, we gotta clear that up.
All right, not a problem. We'll be consistent with that.
And then, my last couple of questions. Okay, so I saw something in there for signage. Typically, when people launch these programs, a lot of cities have these programs. But typically, when people launch these programs, they launch them with the intent that the program pays for itself. So, for example, we're talking about signage. So, if there's a community that's not listed currently, but might be interested in the future in the enforcement, and they need to erect signs in order to now make it known that there's an enforcement provision in place. You know, typically, they would pull from funds that are being paid into the program through decals, or maybe, let's say, a neighborhood that is currently listed, they need to have an extra car for, maybe kids' home for the summer, and they need permission to park an extra car. Typically, people would be able to come to the city, get a decal, get a gas pass, get something, so that they can have the car there, and that car not be in jeopardy of a tow. Do we have that mechanism in place, or are we saying that if you live in one of these communities, regardless, you can?
That's what it's saying.
You want to go to the two at the same time?
Yeah.
Just gonna take her two.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I would, you know, put that up for discussion. I think we need to consider that as well. So, even for those who are disinterested right now, perhaps there are people in the community that have grandchildren, or have someone come into town to visit. I feel like there needs to be a mechanism where they are able to get a vehicle to park in the community legally, even if they are a community that has opted to have parking enforcement. And then I think the proceeds from, the proceeds from that is what the city would then use to install signs, and, you know, do, you know, it should, I feel like it should circulate. The funds from the program should circulate. And then, you know, conversely, you know, if you, maybe if you live in the community, maybe folks are able to have a parking pass on their car. Maybe they had to run in real quick to drop groceries, I don't know, whatever it is, but, or maybe they need to move their car for the night, they have construction in the morning, I don't know. But it seems like if you live there, and you need to park on the road, that they ought to be given some type of a permit or decal or something, so that their cars are not subject to. some type of a permit or decal or something so that their cars are not subject to, you know, maybe one or two cars, or two cars per household, or whatever it is. I think there needs to be a little bit more in here. That would be my thoughts.
Thank you. So, this has been the less filling, tastes great argument for the years that I've been on this commission, and it's never gotten easier. And after years of public meetings and trying to figure out what to do, we did finally put something in. Part of the issue that we were having was also people who may not have been considering their neighbors very carefully because they were expanding their insides of their home and not using their garages, not using their property, and then intruding onto their neighbors. And so this was also put in as a mechanism to help try to alleviate some of that issue. Ms. Calloway, if we have residents in a community that have their rules and regulations that everybody knows when they buy their property says no parking on the street, instead of making those communities have to do a fifty-five percent to be included in here, wouldn't it be something that we can add here, saying if your community already has it in the rules, and everybody who buys their property knows it's in their rules, it can automatically be put in here versus having to have to go through the arduous task of trying to get fifty-five and older? Because, not fifty-five and older, my apologies, I'm a little tired. I'm going into fifty-five and older in a couple of years. Because fifty-five or more, right? The problem is, we are now telling communities that have it in their rules that we're going to tell them that their rules don't count anymore.
I don't think that's what we're doing. If you moved in an HOA, it's in your bylaws, and there's no on-street parking, it's not our intent to conflict with that. And City Attorney, you can opine, but I, that's not what this, this does.
Right, but many times, the communities are told that the communities can't do anything because the city has said that they can park there. We've had issues between various communities in our city. You know, we've had conversations about this over the years. So, my ask is, out of curiosity, would that be something that could be done instead of making, so we have Tamarack Lakes South right now, Tamarack Lakes one and two, which I would like to put in here, and hopefully the district commissioner would agree. Their rules already say that there's no parking on the street. So, if they're not included in this agreement today, instead of having to now solicit the community for fifty-five and older, fifty-five and more for wanting to opt out, they should be able to prove, that the community can prove that their docs, recorded documents, say that there's no parking on the street, and they should be allowed to be protected by not having to... We have a lot of double negatives on this, which is really why it's hard, that they are allowed to have no parking on the street and have it enforced by the city.
Mayor, if it's in the bylaws, I, this policy is not intended to conflict, or to compete, or to manage, or to enforce HOAs that have in their bylaws, there's no on-street parking. And then we do have some communities as well that is engaged with the city through an agreement and with BSO for enforcement of on-street parking. I think we have like seven or eight of those arrangements that we enforce. So, this is not intended to go against HOAs with...
No, my, I think my point is being missed. Instead of, if they're not in this agreement, and their community already has that in their rules, instead of having to make them go do a petition for fifty-five percent of its residents to vote to opt out of not having no parking on the street and to have parking on the street, if their rules and regulations already say no parking on the street, cannot be utilized instead of the petition. Is that something that could be utilized?
If their rule says no parking, then the residents that reside within that HOA must abide by those bylaws. In fact, in some instances, that's probably way stronger than this.
But if they're street, city streets, they're not being enforced, and the city and community can't tow a car or put a ticket on a car that doesn't, that belongs to the city. It's not a private street. So, they need the city. So, that's what I'm asking. Is it, is it something that could be done before I ask my colleagues if they'll accept it as a friendly inclusion?
Mayor, I think Ms. Calloway is, is explaining that this proposed legislation is not changing any areas which prohibit parking on the street via HOA bylaw. It remains the same. But if, 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 if a group of residents want to change that, they have to go through this process, correct?
But the mayor's saying she's concerned if it's in the bylaws, that that community may still want to petition the city to have on-street parking. Is that what you're saying? No?
No, no, no.
We have city streets. We have communities that have city streets.
That prohibit, there's communities right now, today, I, I heard her pretty, that prohibit on-street parking in their bylaws.
In their bylaws, yeah.
And does this legislation change the bylaws in a way to allow, or to, to maintain the status quo, or, or does it allow on-street parking? Basically, you said earlier that it doesn't change the status quo.
The bylaws would trump, yeah.
Then why do you have seven or eight agreements with other communities? You have it because they have city streets. So, it didn't matter that their bylaws said that they are no parking. City wouldn't enforce it. They don't have the authority to enforce it on city streets, so they have to have an agreement with the city.
Some of these HOAs are enforcing, Mayor. They're calling to companies, they are enforcing no parking. We have gotten calls where vehicles have been towed by the HOA.
I'm not saying they're not, but we've been told that some of those communities might not be doing it right. So, I'm asking for something so simple, and I don't know what the problem is.
Sure, so, I apologize, can, can you repeat?
If we have a community, instead of doing that other agreement and having to go through certain other things, if they have in their bylaws and they have city streets, and it shows that their bylaws say, or covenants say that they have no parking on the streets, instead of having to go through the fifty-five percent petition to have their no parking on the street enforced, can that document be used instead?
So, we would add to the policy that if a neighborhood or a community in their bylaws have no on-street parking, then that community would be, that would be enforced by the city.
Correct. It apps out of having to have the petition because the community already has it. It's, it's the declaration. It's the covenants. It's a restrictive covenants. When you buy your home, you know that this is what you are required to do. Not all communities have it. Not all communities' rules say that you can't park. They have their own rules. Some communities do. We're hearing about the older communities that do have it. But the option afterward would be then for the community to do the fifty-five and opt out.
So, Mayor, do we know those communities?
We just have three that were already mentioned today.
Are they listed? I think a few is already listed here.
Tamarack Lakes South, one and two have already been told to us that they're not. Greenhaven and Fairhaven and Sunset Isles is not in here.
All right, I, it's at the pleasure of this commission.
I'll take my other two for right now. Again, I'm not saying that they can't then opt out as a community with fifty-five afterwards to say parking won't be enforced, but for the immediacy of it, to let it still be enforced for those communities that are asking for it. That's what I'm asking for, to include that in there. And then the community, it's, if the community doesn't want it, then they're not providing the city the documents, mind you. Right? If you live in a community that's not being enforced, then you're not saying to the city, "Look at my rules. We're being, enforce us," because they don't want it enforced. But instead of having those communities that already have the rules, why put them through that burden if we don't need to for right now? If we're trying to come up with that creative ability to make everybody happy, from the older communities to the younger communities, why is that option not available? And this city has been in the average age of forty-eight going down for the past twenty-five years. Like I said, this has been an argument for the past, what, twenty? So, we're trying to come to something creative. Why can't we do a little bit to help our residents? Commissioner Bolton.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney, is, is this selective enforcement, or, as we learned the new term this evening, selective judgment?
This policy, obviously, is a policy that's been driven by commission feedback from residents in terms of how they implement this parking regulation. And, and staff heard those feedback from members of the commission, and to a certain degree, create an ordinance that exempts some areas or allow residents to exempt themselves. And some areas, you have enforcement. So, it's, from a standpoint, it can be enforced legally based on the policy directive of the commission. Okay?
So, is it selective enforcement or not?
I don't see it because if, I'm like, I give you a city of mountain beaches or coastal cities, and, and I heard Commissioner Patterson talk about residential parking permit, like on certain cities, especially where cities would limit it right-of-way and limit it, I would say condo communities where the condos weren't, weren't built with sufficient parking, the city create legislation to allow residential permit parking on the right-of-way. And if you don't have one of those permit on your vehicle, you're going to get towed. So, and even though it's a public street. So, cities have created, I call it, legislation to assist residents in dealing with parking shortage and, and while enforcing the parking from non-residents. Okay?
So, it's not selective enforcement?
I don't see it.
Okay. All right, and the, I, I believe that in the, in the meeting, I did say Tamarack Lakes South and not Tamarack Lakes North.
So, no Tamarack Lakes North, Tamarack Lakes South. Okay.
Yeah. Secondly, I, I have a very good pulse on District One. I know that Tamarack Lakes one and two, while they have some on-street parking issues, they do have their residents park at the clubhouse area and so forth. So, they don't have much of an issue as Tamarack Lakes South does. So, I agree with the gentleman from District One that Tamarack Lakes South should be on that, and that was the original intent, not Tamarack Lakes South. So...
Tamarack Lakes South, not north?
Not, not north, correct. We just have to remember that one of the reasons that we're doing this is to protect our residents and to make sure that, you know, emergency vehicles and that sort of stuff can get through. And who, who would want to direct a ticket to themselves, right? So, this section that says fifty-five percent of residents can submit a petition and, and vote to get parking enforcement, to get a twenty-one dollar ticket, would never happen. I, I don't see it happening. It's a good idea. It looks good on paper, and, you know, I, I don't have a problem with it. I, I don't think it will, it would, it would happen. But we're policymakers. We're, we're the ones that should be making policy for the, the residents sometimes. And we ought to make policies sometimes that they don't agree with but are good for them. Right? And so, if, if somebody is caught in an emergency situation, we need to make sure that we're, we're taking care of them. So, I'd love to see some language in there that says that a commissioner may modify the list at any time with a majority vote by the commission. That's what we're doing tonight, anyway. Commissioner Wright is, is adding, you know, communities, Mayor Gomez is suggesting communities, I'm changing communities. That's what we'd be doing in the future. So, I don't think that this is fully baked. It could be fully baked tonight if we add that language that says, you know, an elected official may modify the list at any time, subject to a majority vote of the commission. So, I'd like to hear if I have support for that.
Question, if you don't mind. Would that be taking the control out of the communities when they have to vote for that fifty-five percent?
The communities would still have the control. So, if a community does not want it, they can petition the city and, with a fifty-five percent vote. If the, if the community does want it, they can petition the, the, the community as well for a fifty-five percent vote. But I think if this commission says, for instance, "Hey, I, I see a problem in X community. I don't think my time should be running. I'm answering a question." If a community is, you know, having an issue with parking, and you see the, the issue as a commissioner, you shouldn't lose the right to bring that attention, to the attention of your colleagues, and your colleagues should be able to respect that, to say, "Yeah, there is a problem in your community." And of course, you know, the mayor has citywide, so, you know, she sees a problem in all of the communities. She should not be restricted from bringing a community in the future and asking for approval of that. Does that, that answer your question? All right, so...
Point of clarification, Commissioner. I think initially, we, we did the call-out of the communities by each commissioner, so it seems like we were reverting back to that by doing this, is that, well, it's the same thing, that we'll be adding and removing communities based on the, the recommendation of the commissioner and approval of the city commission. Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, so, so we, 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 we did the same thing here, but the legislation is not giving us the ability to do it in the future.
But I thought the initial discussion of the legislation was that we know the communities that have parking issues. We're going to put that in there, and then we put the power in the hands of the people who want to be a part of the parking situation. I think this idea came about from us not wanting to specifically do the call-out of the communities, which we did initially, and now we're saying, okay, we're going to put in these specific communities. Now, we put it in the hands of the people to say, if you want to opt in, or if you want to opt out. So, going back, going back to the commission, we're going back to where we started, where we still have the power to pick and, and add and remove communities.
And, and, and we should have that power to add and remove communities, but they should also have that power to add and remove, to add their community or remove their community. The, this piece of legislation gives them the ability to add and remove a community. It does not give us the ability to add and remove a community in the future. I don't see this, that language in the legislation. And I don't want to give up that right to come back to city commission and say, "Hey, I want to add this community." Or, let's say, if, if a community builds a, a parking garage, then their woes are, are done. If the community gets a grant from the city or wherever to extend driveways, there's no more on, on-street parking, then we can take that community off. So, it, it gives us the ability, the flexibility to add, subtract, but it also gives the residents the ability to add, add and subtract. I'm never want to, want to take away power from the body that the residents selected.
City Attorney.
I just, just, Commissioner Bolton, for clarification. There's, there's a general rule, parking is permitted, with, with the exception of one, two, and three. You want to add number four, which is page, page nine of the ordinance. Which four basically would give a member of the commission a, a authority to...
Page what?
Page nine. It's page four. Page four of the temporary ordinance. Just look on top, page four.
Okay, so I'm looking at the City of Tamarack on-street parking policy. That's, that's what I'm looking at.
I'm looking at ordinance.
Okay, so...
Page nine.
It's, okay, so we're, we're passing this policy by ordinance?
Well, the ordinance is basically provide the guidelines and the law.
Right, but it's not in the policy.
But the ordinance is the controlling law.
I understand that, but the, we, we pass legislation by resolution or ordinance, and there's an ordinance that points to a policy, and if the policy does not have the language... And if the policy does not have the language, then it does not exist.
And I would suggest that the ordinance be consistent with the policy.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, it's not in the policy. And I'm saying, added in the policy is, it does not, it does not here give us the right to add or subtract. Um...
And I understand that. What I'm indicating to you, if, if you wanna change the policy, it should also be reflected in ordinance.
Yeah, and, and you're saying it's already in the ordinance on page, on page four?
No, I'm saying, we need to add number four. Uh, it's one, two, three. Uh, if you look at page four...
Page four, the ordinance.
It creates three exceptions. Okay?
It's page nine. It's page nine.
Page nine, okay.
Page nine.
Yeah, I have to be counting.
On top, it says four.
Okay, so...
Yeah, it, it, it's basically the general rule, on-street parking is permitted except one, two, and three. And based on your comments and, and the revisions you wanna make to policy, you wanna basically indicate that an elected official can add to the list of neighborhoods that can have restricted or unrestricted parking on the right of way, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, exactly. And, and, and listen, there, there are communities that perhaps could, um, get a development right next to it. Right? So for instance, in District One, uh, on Rock Island, there is, um, Bailey Square, legacy, legacy of Tamarack. Uh, if that community should, let's say, uh, be full one-hundred percent capacity, then what could happen is that some of those residents are gonna park at Lakes of Carriage Hills or a neighboring community, or go over to the gate, or go over to the other side. So we never know when a development is going to trigger more cars and those cars wanna place the parks, and now they're going to find parking in another community that now triggers a problem in their community. So that community is gonna feel powerless with cannot get a fifty-five percent, and we should have the power to do that.
You, you, Commissioner Bolton, you want basically a standard outside of petition requirement that, but it would be within the discretion of this body?
Yes.
Okay. Got it, Ms. Callaway?
I do.
You got it?
Okay. Question. So that's automatically going in, or is there gonna be a discussion with the commission? That's come, one of the things that happens here all the time?
I'm, I'm asking...
Okay, so no, but you're saying, okay, Ms. Callaway, that she's putting it in?
He says, did you hear that, Ms. Callaway? And then at the appropriate time, I'm gonna ask for a friendly amendment.
Where we made any changes, man.
It's still a fluid conversation. And it's giving you power, so I don't understand why you would be opposed to that. Okay. Nah, I'm nice to nice. Cause you look pretty. So, um, I would like to add that, um, as a friendly amendment.
Commissioner Wright?
Accepted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Patterson?
I, I mean, I'm good. Um, yeah, Maury already seconded, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright already accepted it, but I was just gonna add that, yeah, I mean, I agree. I think, um, you know, I mean, I'm having a community meeting at Spring Lake in a couple of days, and if I bring out the entire neighborhood and they say, hey, we got parking problems, I oughta be able to come to the body and say, hey, you know, I need to add this community. Um, if I went there, they all assembled, so I think that that's a, an, an, a needed addition, for sure.
Um, two minutes.
Yeah, I think that addressed the mayor, uh, also concerned about the communities that has existed parking restriction covenant, uh, bylaws. I think that friendly amendment from Commissioner Bolton also addressed your concern, uh, with communities that have bylaws that restrict parking, that you can basically put them on the list and that the bylaw would control, uh, basically the enforcement.
Well, I appreciate that, but it also is subject to commission approval. Whereas if it was already in the rules, it's not subject to commission approval because it already has an option to already be in there, and they wouldn't have to go through having to come to a commission meeting and be put on, on the dais, and then we have an ordinance, so it's two readings. So if they already had it in the rules...
No, this was, there would be, the way I would look at it is, we would have the language, uh, that creates, the general language at the commission, but it would be a policy change. But we would have the language in the ordinance that allowed a policy to, to be consistent with the policy. So I, I wouldn't see it as every time a commission, uh, elected official wants to add a community to the list, that it has to be an ordinance change. No, it wouldn't be...
It would be a resolution change, but they still have to go through the process versus just coming to the city and showing whichever department, presumptively Community Development, my rules for this community say this, and our community wants to be included in the ordinance, in the policy. So it's adding an extra step where...
And Mayor, if, if you want the, the communities that this commission and that's up to this body want, if you have a particular comm- comm- community, uh, and you want administrative, uh, uh, I guess acceptance or approval by the city manager or his staff, that's up to the commission. You know, I don't make that call.
I understand, I put that out there, and the commission doesn't seem to want to handle it, so it's fine. So I don't think, though, there's an end run on what was provided by already Commissioner Bolton. But I appreciate it, but I don't think it is. Commissioner Wright?
Um, oh, ma-
Commissioner Bolton had his two minutes.
Thank you. Um, when I had the conversation with, um, a couple of communities, including Mainland's, um, communities, uh, I did come back with some suggestions with, to the city manager, and that was, um, not necessarily having BSO, um, enforce this, uh, but to look at private companies, uh, that could enforce this. Uh, I believe sometimes BSO is busy and with, with reason, they're dealing with other things. And I'm not saying that parking is, you know, not important, but if we had, um, a private company that is consistently going on schedule around these neighborhoods to enforce these, I think it would be better. Uh, BSO is, is not always going to be available, and then I don't want this to be a sporadic thing. They just go here, try to get some enforcement, and then six months later go back. So, um, I'm sure you remember that conversation. Did you look into that? I think I also brought that up at a, at a workshop.
If I may, Madam Mayor, um, I did, uh, I believe we did go out for, uh, solicitations on that service and, 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 um, we were not, uh, successful in, um, getting responses.
Uh, how could we have, but because this is not yet passed?
This was, um, um, you know, when the city started enforcing, um, parking, uh, regulations and, and, and when the city was hiring the, um, uh, or, or in the process of hiring the additional code enforcement officers with parking enforcement, uh, possibilities at that time, we wanted to at least, um, supplement our services with, uh, outside services while we were in the process of hiring those code enforcement officers, and we weren't that successful finding the, uh, finding that company. If I, if I'm correct, um, Ms. Callaway, your department was, uh, managing that process, but I believe that was the, uh, the outcome.
That's correct, Mr. Manager. And you still have the ability to do so under Section fourteen dash thirty-seven. You are able to, uh, appoint any other person appointed by the city manager authorized to be a parking enforcement specialist, provided that they meet the requirements of Florida Statute three sixteen, six forty. This is Section fourteen dash thirty-seven B. Yeah, ticketing procedure. So that's been in, uh, the ordinance. The city manager still has the ability to do that.
The ordinance has seven pages.
Page ten at the bottom, Commissioner, page five at the top, if that helps. Section fourteen dash thirty-seven B, ticketing procedures. Vehicles parking in a violation of this article shall be ticketed by the sheriff's office, code enforcement officer, fire inspector, and any other person appointed by the city manager authorized to be a parking enforcement specialist after meeting Florida statute requirements.
Okay. Um, I find it odd that we can't find somebody because there are several communities that enforce parking. City of Fort Lauderdale, Miami Beach.
They have to be a parking enforcement specialist as prescribed by Florida statute. And when we hired the officers, it took about six months or so, if you recall, Mr. Manager, to get them in a class. So I don't know if there is kinda like a delay period, but...
There has to be some existing company. I, I'm in court almost every day, and, you know, I park downtown, if I don't pay the meter, somebody can send me a ticket. And, and they do, if I may, and they do exist, and then they're, um, they're in,
in service. The ones that we found, uh, were, um, enforcing, um, a community's, uh, parking requirements. No one, uh, that we found was, um, was able to provide a citywide service. They're more focused, you know, by community, by, uh, an apartment complex, but we didn't find one that could come in and, 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 uh, you know, blanket the entire city.
Okay, so, so now that we have this, and we're gonna pass this tonight, hopefully, we will look again?
We can, absolutely. And this is on first reading, so you see it on second reading at the next meeting.
Okay. I give my fifteen seconds to Maury.
Ms. Norton?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just looked at my email. The Havens as well, that should be on the list. Fair Haven, Green Haven.
The Havens.
Um, the, the, I said west of, non-enforceable, west of Pine Island between, yeah, so the Havens as well.
The community is called the Havens?
Fair Haven, Green Haven, yes.
I'm sorry, you said...
Fair Haven, Green Haven, yeah.
Fair, okay. Fair Haven.
Was that wrong?
Yeah, Green Haven is on there.
And Sunset Isles. And, and just clarifications on the mess point. If the, the community already enforces parking in that community, clarify that a little more, I was a little confused. If, if, if it's...
Then the HOA would enforce it, but the mayor's saying oftentimes they might not have the mechanism, the resource, they can't enforce it. So I don't know if we're adding those communities or...
Uh, what I'm saying, these communities have been told that just because their community rules don't allow parking, because it's city streets, these communities cannot tow and cannot enforce.
Oh, I got you.
And so that's the reason why the request was made. If their associations say that they don't allow parking and people have moved in subject to those rules, and they live with city streets, then as an exception to having to do the fifty-five, they show their rules. They still have the opportunity to do the fifty-five percent.
To remove it.
But you're saying that the rules will supersede the fifty-five percent? If you're saying that the rules, they would come with their rules, now it's gonna supersede them having to go and get fifty-five percent from the community?
The, the rules, if they have the rules, it would supersede having to petition to opt out of the no parking on the street. But if they're in and their rules say that there is no parking on the street, they are still entitled to the rules of fifty-five percent petition to get them to opt in to no parking on the street.
So you're saying to add language in the policy that would make an additional exceptions for communities with no on-street parking in their bylaws that are on city streets, that they're able to bring their documents to the city to establish, to show us, and those communities would be enforced?
Right, so you have number two? It's a second part of number two.
Yeah, the, the only, the only issue that we have to research and to make sure, because if, if the bylaw is the controlling law, members of the commission may put communities on their list that have bylaws that may prohibit parking, so we have to be very careful, uh, to deem the bylaw as the controlling law. Because if a member of the commission say no enforcement of parking in this area, then you would have a conflict with the bylaws if the bylaw said, uh, it prohibit on-street parking. Okay, so we, we, we have to look at that.
Just keep it, I guess we keep it as is.
Point of clarification, um, and I, I would also like to point out that, I mean, many of our communities are really old, so some of the restrictive covenants can be expired. So just because there is a bylaw that says on-street parking is prohibited, it doesn't mean that it is a current and valid bylaw. And so now we're getting in the business of managing communities. And I just think that we're well, we're way, what this is intended to do is enforce from a city's level. I don't think that we're in the business of enforcing HOA rules. Uh, I, I just, I think that we, we stick to what we've got. Um, we add the, you know, I, I, I would, you know, I think the, the commissioner already made a friendly amendment, and the vice mayor already accepted the sec- uh, seconded that friendly amendment. I think we stick to what we have, um, and, you know, kinda err out of the, out of the gray area.
Just one point of clarification. Myrtle applies. You have to have your rules and regulations being up to date with your, your condo docs and your association docs. But anyway, um, they may be thirty years old, but you expire, then you have to redo them all. Um, seeing that this conversation is already, I think, beaten, don't you think? We're good? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero as amended.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is nine fifty-two. We are taking a break until nine oh five? Nine, what? Yeah, sorry, I'm going, I, I really need a break, don't you think? So we'll be back, actually, take that back. Ten ten, ten ten wins. We'll see you back in ten ten.
Yes, we do. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 10:10 and we are beginning again. We are up to 8A TO 2597. City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
In ordinance of the City Commission of Tamarack, amended chapter 10, article 4 of the City Tamarack Land Development Code, entire development and design standards by revising section 10-4.4, entire landscaping and tree preservation, clarify strengthen the city landscaping and tree preservation regulations to enhance consistency in their interpretation, application, enforcement, to expand the purpose for which tree preservation trust funds may be used, provided for effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton, a second by Commissioner Patterson. Maxine Callaway, our deputy city manager, is available for any questions. I believe that I have Mark Goggan listed for this item. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right.
Good evening again. Mark Goggan from Tamarack Lake South. Just a question for something to look at because it came up during interviews for some new residents that we had a couple of weeks ago. Their insurance company asked them about the trees in their yard, what size they are and how many. So is this something that, I don't know if Maxine will have the answer, that's considered how it's going to affect their insurance policy? Because that's what their agent was asking, how many trees are in the yard because if they fall on the roof. So that's something that to remember too, as to how that's going to affect our residents throughout the city if this one insurance company is already asking that question. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that no one else had signed up and no one else wishes to speak on this item, public comments are now closed. This item is open for discussion among the commission. Seeing no one wishing to speak on this item, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
8B TO 2598, City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
In ordinance of the City Commission of Tamarack, amended chapter 10, article 5 of the City Tamarack Land Development Code, entire development review procedures by amendment section 10-5.2, entitled summary table of development review procedures specifically table 10-5.1, table 10-5.2, entitled general notice requirement amended subsection 10-5.4J, entitled plat approval to designate the city manager designated administrator authority for plat and replat submitting and revise plat approval procedures in compliance with Senate Bill 784, provided for effective date.
Thank you very much. I need a motion in a second, please.
Move ahead.
Second.
Oh, you were doing so well. I've got a motion by Commissioner Bolton, I have a second by the Vice Mayor, Commissioner Daniel. Ms. Callaway is still available to answer any questions. Public comments are now open. Seeing none, public comments are now closed. Seeing no one wishing to speak on this item by the commission, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
8C TO 2601, City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
In ordinance of the City Commission of Tamarack, amended chapter 10, article 5 of City Tamarack Code of Ordinance, entitled administration by amendment section 10-5.3, entitled common review procedures by specifically amendment section 10-5.3C, entitled pre-application neighborhood meeting to require pre-application neighborhood means to be open to the public to require extra notice to owners of properties within a townhouse, condo, condominium and timeshare development, provided for effective date. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton, a second by Commissioner Patterson. Ms. Callaway remains available for any questions. Public comments are now open. Public comments are now closed. Commissioner Bolton, I see your light is lit. Do you wish to ask any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no one else wishes to ask any questions, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
8D TO 2603, City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
In ordinance of the City Commission of Tamarack, amended city code ordinance by amendment chapter 2, entitled administration, order for 3, entitled boards committee commissions by repealing its entirety, division 12, entitled privatization committee, provided for effective date.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton, a second by Vice Mayor Daniel. Public comments are now open. Public comments are now closed. Wait, oops, I'm so sorry. Yes, I apologize. And actually, it does say 8D on my list. My apologies. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak after Ms. Johnson? You'll be able to do so.
Kate Johnson, mail in spore. Regarding the privatization committee, from my understanding, the privatization committee oversees, investigates and gives input when the city is considering privatizing a service as when a commissioner wanted to see if BSO fire rescue would be better than our own Tamarack fire rescue. Of course, there was no way they're better for us than our own department and that idea was dismissed. But I believe the committee is made up of residents who then have the input. However, what happens when you dismantle this committee? Who researches? Who makes determinations? Who gives input from residents? Is it the commission, city personnel only? Then the cost is totally borne by the city and not dependent on volunteers who are willing to do this work. Input is only from the city because by the time it comes before the commission, most decisions are already made and resident input has little sway. It seems that this is a power grab to give more power to the city and the commission while taking it away from residents. I may be wrong, but taking away this committee does nothing to give voice and input from residents. Why fix what isn't broken unless there's a reason and it is broken? And then if it's broken, let's fix it, not do away with it. This committee should stand. Resident voices are always needed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, public comments are now closed. Discussion by the commission. Well, I'll just say, everything I said last meeting, I reiterate this meeting as to why I do not think that this is a good idea. I won't belabor the point because I just won't. City Commissioner Bolton, are you wishing to speak or are you wishing to vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just want to make a comment. You know, it's a recurring theme from Kate that, you know, is against the fire department. That's not true. I appreciate the fire department. I've always appreciated the fire department. I've said that to the captain many times. I've spoken to the guys several times. I've gone to the fire station. I've brought them gifts. They know my heart. This conversation was lost in translation. What I said back then was we wanted to look at the budget to see whether or not BSO would be saving us money. That's all that was. So to regurgitate this conversation, it's just ludicrous and I wish Kate would stop. Thank you.
And I wish we wouldn't call people by names like that. Anyway, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gomez?
No.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes three to two.
Thank you. We are now moving to our quasi judicial hearing, 9A TB 098. City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
I am 9A, board order approving, denied special exception application, request approval for the construction installation of digital billboard display 50 feet in height to be located west of Sawgrass Expressway and Norfolk Commercial Boulevard on an undeveloped parcel of land, zone of recreation and owned by the City of Tamarack.
All right. City Attorney, will you please read the rules for quasi judicial and then our City Clerk will swear in any witnesses.
All person testifying for the City Commission will be sworn in. The applicant in factive power will be given an opportunity to present evidence, bring forth witness, cross-examine witness, rebut any testimony. All evidence relied upon by reasonably prudent person shall be immiscible where such evidence will be immiscible in a court of law. Hearsay evidence may be used for the purposes of supplement or explain other evidence, but shall not be sufficient by itself to support a finding. Statement from the attorney should only be considered as argument, not considered as testimony. The City Commission has authority to refuse to hear any testimony which is irrelevant and repetitive. Documentary evidence may be presented in a form of copy, original should be available upon request. All parties should be given an opportunity to review evidence, compare copies with the originals and question parties about the evidence. The order of presentation will be as follows. Applicant, our applicant representative will present first, staff will then get presentation if requested by the City Commission. Effective powers will be allowed to present testimony. Persons who are supported or in opposition cannot provide testimonial statements. A party will then be given an opportunity to answer any questions. City Commission will obviously make the decision after the presentation. Now, I would like to know if there was any ex parte communication between applicant and the members of City Commission.
I will go down the line. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, I spoke to them.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, I met with them. City Attorney.
I have spoken with Mr. Caesar. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I met with him.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes, many months ago.
Yes. There we go. Now, City Attorney, please swear in the witnesses.
Madam Clerk? I'm not taking her job.
All witnesses for this item, please stand and raise the right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Madam Mayor, the witnesses have been sworn in.
Excellent. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton and I have a second by Commissioner Wright. The designated agent for the applicant will deliver for the presentation or any one of the three of you fine gentlemen.
If I might, and I'll be brief, the applicant will make the presentation. My name is Mitch Caesar, attorney, for the record, for the applicant. Let me just give a very quick overview. This is something that has taken a number of years, I think at least three, and has really evolved from where it started, which you'll get more detail, I'm sure. And where we ended up was, we really wanted to have an interest in being at a site, if possible. The city had offered multiple sites. We kind of evolved and ended up talking about unused city land. That's how we ended up by Sawgrass. We also felt it very important to be at a location that did not, did not affect homeowners in any way. I think the only thing that might be affected are the alligators. It's on the west side of the Sawgrass Expressway. There is nothing there. There's a little sliver of unused city property and we are only going to use a sliver of that. The city, as has been already negotiated, will be generating significant fees every month from that. And the better we do, the more fees are generated to the city. Also, we'll be providing free advertising space for the city. Also, emergency information, because this is digital, the city could contact us, God forbid, there's a hurricane or a storm coming, we could start flashing signs within 30 seconds, I believe, of the city notifying us. Again, P&amp;Z passed it last week, five, nothing. We believe we have staff support. I'm going to bring Robert up here. Just wanted to give you a very quick, broad overview of the history of it and the cooperation. I do want to say that every recommendation the city has made over all this time, we've agreed to every single one, to the best of my knowledge. Robert, why don't you come up and if you could also not only give us an overview, but a little more detail about the fees?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Robert Rubin. I'm the CEO of Three N. We did start this about three years ago. We came at the request of a private property owner. Staff wasn't really fond of that idea, but they did suggest that they had public land, city land that they would consider. They ended up, under Ms. Callaway's team, picking five pieces of property owned by the city and we selected one of those. The property happened to be the farthest west on the Sawgrass. All the five properties were on expressways. And so that's where, you know, that's how we got here. It passed, I believe it was 4-1 and, you know, about three years ago, and ordinance 2504. And here we are today. I just want to show you, if you can see, there's an X mark on the west side. It's right near city furniture, just to give you a perspective. And you can see there are no residences anywhere near the property. And it's for our, in our business, to be able to generate revenue and you'll, I'm about to tell you that we're going to be partners in this, but it does almost 100,000 vehicles a day and that's pretty good for a sign. So just to, I'm going to kind of avoid or go through this quickly, but I just want to talk about, to reiterate what Mr. Caesar said. We have entered into a proposed license agreement, which I think is next on your agenda tonight. And part of that license agreement is that we provide public announcements for the city to promote city events. Sawgrass is mostly, mostly a commuter expressway. People don't necessarily stop in Tamarack, but this will give an opportunity for people to know what's going on in Tamarack. It also will be excellent for promoting city-owned businesses. Again, people drive through Tamarack and don't necessarily exit. And hopefully, we can, we provide really affordable rates to advertise and will encourage businesses to promote themselves, to have people stop in Tamarack and hopefully spend money at those businesses. Our financial arrangement together is that we pay a fixed amount, base amount, whether we make money or not. I believe it's 30,000 a sign. There's two signs back to back, so that's 60,000 base per month minimum. And then you, if the revenue sharing is higher, there's 25% revenue share. So which hopefully, we estimate to be somewhere around $100,000 a year, which is expectation. Just to give you a perspective, the sign takes up about one parking space in length. It's about six or seven feet, a radius of about six or seven feet. These signs are also used, as Mr. Caesar said, to promote safety and the missing persons is a big part of that. Amber Alert, Silver Alerts and Miss FBI Missing Persons. It's also used by the city for maybe hurricane evacuation or a major, I know there was a major accident on the Sawgrass in the last week, I believe, two weeks ago. But we could also alert people to that so they could exit the expressway. And the city, as I said, the city as part of the contract has the opportunity to promote the city and again, city events. I know you have several here. So give you an idea what a sign looks like. We use a very high-quality sign that adjusts the brightness for night and day. Somebody asked us the other day, could it hurt the environment like the Everglades? And the signs have no light emanating from the back of the sign. And if there's ever a problem with the sign, it just turns off. There's no flashing. This is very important because it is an expressway. They're static images. So there are no, you know, images that could be distracting, which is important. So and I'll, available to answer any questions.
I do want to add one quick thing. We're also giving preferred rates to businesses in Tamarack. So they will not pay the normal rate. They will be getting a preferred lower rate. And of course, don't forget that the main reason residents usually might object is how they're affected. That's one of the reasons we picked actually the location that may have had, has the least traffic, because it's west of the, west of the Sawgrass and therefore, we felt it important not to affect any homeowner in any way. That's what exists here. So it's a good partnership. The city does well with it. Hopefully, we will. And we're also very hopeful Tamarack businesses will also.
Thank you. Before we go to any conversation and discussion by the commission, staff, will you be doing a presentation? Or are you submitting yours into the record?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the quasi judicial items, staff is submitting their presentation into the record, subject of course for your consideration, subject to the nine conditions that's listed in the memorandum. So we just want to make sure that you are aware of those conditions that's attached to staff's recommendation.
This item is now open to the public. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. Open to discussion by this commission? Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you have, in your presentation, do you have like other location where your billboards are located? Like other places? Do you have example of other places where your billboard?
So...
I didn't see that in the presentation. Would you have that by chance?
Oh, no, it's not in the presentation. But we have signs in Miami-Dade County and we're working with a couple other opportunities in Broward County, for example, the city of Fort Lauderdale. Anywhere else? I think, yeah, city of Fort Lauderdale as well.
Some other locations are in process, but not formal. Remember, this is also a very different concept as evolved through working with the staff. Because usually you have a private landowner and you, you know, pay a rent for them. This is unusual and it's probably the new trend. Unused city properties, they generate significant revenue and have good control. Also to remember, hopefully with your passage tonight, we still have two other hoops to go through. We have to go through a minor hoop with the county and then the state DOT. So there are a lot of layers of protection, honestly.
Why, why this location? Why not sample in Coral Springs or Oakland Park and Sunrise? Why this specific location on commercial? They all have land bordering the Everglades, don't they?
Yeah, I don't think it was the Everglades. I think it was the fact that there was residential closer. And usually there are some objections to being too close to residential. You have, in your ordinance, you have, that exists today, it says 150 feet from residential, but we're well over 2,000 feet. So we thought that was the most, the safest. We, truthfully, we didn't take multiple locations because there are competitors out there and we didn't think it would be, you know, that we should be, you know, take all the locations. Maybe the competitors would pursue those other locations, although they haven't yet. So we just picked the one that we thought was the most, that fit our needs and, you know, high traffic, not near residential, basically.
We thought it was honestly the least impactful to city residents. All the other choices had probably higher traffic, but all impacted residents. That's why we shied away from that.
Makes sense. And driving on Sawgrass, where's the next billboard? Coming from 95, you pass Wiles, you pass University, it's parkland, you come around, there's Coral Ridge Drive, then there's Atlantic. Is this the only billboard on Sawgrass?
It's the only billboard on Sawgrass.
It's going to be the first?
Yes, it'll be the first.
It'll be the first on the Sawgrass?
Yeah. Just to add Florida statute, the Florida ordinance that's FDOT regulates, says you can't put, they have a spacing requirement of 1,000 feet, not on an expressway and 1,500 feet on expressway. So, so there, this could be the only Sawgrass billboard in Tamarack, I believe, because or there may be a possibility of another one, but I, you have to look at both sides of that sign.
Also, the way it evolved with staff, if we were to private, with a private landowner even in the same location, we'd be paying a lot less rent than the deal we made with Tamarack, but we thought that was important, to be honest.
And you said it's 60,000 per month? And you said it's sixty thousand per month? Per year, I'm sorry, ah.
That, that's the, that's,
Yeah, I said per month, you said per month, yeah, yeah.
That's the base rent. That's the minimum. We expect it fully to be significantly higher than that, but that's the base rent if we never sell an ad.
So sixty thousand per year, just to clarify, because I heard per month. So I was like, ka-ching, ka-ching.
Commissioner, may I clarify?
So sorry.
Commissioner, may I clarify that further for the record? Only because it's a scale. So for year one and two is sixty thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of net revenue. For year three, uh, to seven is thirty-three thousand per panel or sixty-six thousand and twenty, or twenty-five percent of net revenue. When you get to year eight, it jumps up to thirty-six thousand per panel or total of seventy-two thousand or twenty-five percent of net revenue. Year twelve, then it's seventy-eight thousand or twenty-five percent of net revenue. And then if they're in the second term, because it's fifteen-year initial term, and then an option to renew for another fifteen years. So year sixteen, it goes to eighty-four thousand a year or twenty-seven percent of net revenue. And year twenty-three, it goes to ninety thousand a year or thirty percent of net revenue. And we get to audit, this is how we know the net revenue on an annual basis, they have to submit that, so on and so forth.
Okay, so we're gonna submit that every year. I like, I like it because I call it the Michael Jordan deal. You know, people get contracts, they have a fixed price. Jordan said, give me five percent of whatever happens and made him a billionaire. So I always like the deal where you get a percentage of something because there's a huge upside and there's a floor. So, so that part of it, sixty grand a month, I was, you know, but you said per year, so. So twenty-five percent of revenue, preferred rate for Tamarack businesses?
Absolutely.
When you say preferred rate, how is that quantified? How do you, how do you value that?
So, um, if a McDonald's or Coca-Cola advertised with us, we generally sell, um, at a, a spec, a rate that's a, you know, significantly higher, but we have flexibility. And we offer that to local businesses and we can offer them, instead of maybe once every minute, we can offer them once every two-minute or even once every three or four-minute. And that really substantially lowers the rate for them. So even small businesses have an opportunity to, um, participate in, uh, in advertising. So I, I think that's a little unique to us. I don't think a lot of companies do that. But we found it very effective to appeal to the local, uh, businesses.
To the local companies?
Yeah.
And you said it-
And also we'd be advertising city events, obviously, for free on a regular basis as well.
So city events, you give us free advertising?
That's correct.
How do you, like, quant, how do you value what's prime time? Prime time is what, five o'clock? How do you, do you pay more at five or do you pay more at a certain time?
You know, we have the ability to, to do that, but we generally, um, don't do it that way. So if you, if you're contracting for every minute, you get every minute twenty-four hours a day.
So you're not gonna give us twelve o'clock at night when there's not much traffic?
No. So if you're, if we're putting you on the board, you're gonna get either every minute or every two minutes, whatever it is.
And preferred rate for Tamarack business is not gonna be at two AM?
No, 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 no.
No, it's just, just, just wanted to, just wanna, I mean, it, it sounds good, but obviously, you know, I understand how the advertising business work. Yeah, those were my only question. And you said the environment, there's no issues? It doesn't affect, it doesn't affect the Everglades?
No, no.
What if the state decide, I know many years ago, Mr. Caesar, you might know the history, but I know many years ago the state decided they were not going west anymore. What if they decide in the future if they want to go, you know, go, go into the Everglades?
Well, so the, the back of the signs are, are completely dark. So there aren't, is no light emanating from the back of the sign. So, um, um, so, you know, somebody asked us once, can, can this hurt an animal or whatever? You know, cause them, but there is no light coming from the back. The light only goes, um, to, uh, to the Sawgrass.
Okay.
There's no attraction.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no, um, no light pollution? And these, the parcels, the city-owned land, there's nothing happening there? There's nothing that can happen? Compatibility? You said you don't have any that you can show, so that's fine.
This, and again, this is all part and parcel of the city making recommendations over the last significant period and us agreeing to literal, to, well, not literally to every recommendation.
Alright, thanks.
So I have questions that are subject to the special exception in general, and then I have other questions that are subject to the contract and we're not up to the contract. So I'm gonna try to get it to where, um, the distance of the light on the sign, you said it doesn't affect homes. How far can someone be expected to see this sign? How far away?
You can see it from, uh, probably a quarter of a mile away, about a quarter of a mile.
So there's no homes in, within a quarter mile of the radius of this light?
You would have to be on the Sawgrass to see it. There's like a, there'll be like a thirty-degree angle. Yeah, like a thirty-degree, sorry, I should, a thirty-degree angle. So it won't be, you won't be able to see it, even, even if you're looking straight, straight on. There's very little light emanating from that, so you really have to kind of see it straight on.
The transferable part? I have a little concern about it being transferable without coming back here for review. If you're transferring it to another company, we don't know if they're gonna, they have to still stick to the rules, but we don't know if they're gonna be the same as you guys. So I have a little trouble with that. It also is based on having a different business that we didn't have them come back before us and they transferred the property and the, the special exception and I don't think it was a good idea for that particular company. So my comment is like the sins of the father. I just don't think it should be transferable automatically without coming back to the city. Ms. Callaway, I think it's been said, but I want to make sure. Absolutely no other billboard, not one, would be allowed at this turnpike site, the Sawgrass site. The only other site, if somebody wanted to do a billboard in the city of Tamarack would have to be the turnpike. Is that correct?
There is a distance separation of fifteen hundred feet. And so if that's met, but remember what we did in twenty-twenty-three when we amended the code, we made it a special exception, which is why, uh, they are here. So it's unlikely there will be another one at Sawgrass, but the other locations we have are on the turnpike. On the turnpike, yeah.
Because I remember there being eight or so areas-
There are like five.
In one location and some another in another location. So if Sawgrass is taken, if you should get this, Sawgrass is taken, no one else can go there, and then the, the only other place would be the turnpike.
It's unlikely, yeah.
The rest of my comments are all about contract, so. Seeing no other?
Accept a friendly amendment.
What friendly amendment?
Didn't you say you, you don't want it to be, um, transferable?
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. Now, Commissioner Wright, you have to determine if you accept that, because you were the second.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I presume you mean as you-
Let, let me clarify. Basically, the special exception, if it's approved, if, uh, the applicant sells the billboard, the business, they would need to come back and get the permission from the city commission.
That answers my question.
Okay.
City clerk, please call the roll. Oh, wait, 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 wait.
Not, not just, not just sales, but a sign and I don't, I don't want a limited word.
It's a transfer of the special exception is condition number one. Sorry, rewording it, any transfer? So we're, for that condition, we're changing it to no transfer is permissible without approval of the city commission.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
Good for you, Mitch.
No, City Clerk, good to go.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
No, you know I said no the last time, people, so. I'm trying to be consistent. Anyway, we're up to public hearings. Ten A, TR one-four-three-one-nine. City attorney, please read the title of the record.
A resolution, City Commission of City of Tamarack approving and authorizing execution of license agreement between the city of Tamarack and Three N Outdoor Media LLC, granting the right, privilege and license to use a twelve-hundred-and-forty-eight square feet area describing Exhibit B on, of city-owned property locate just west of the Sawgrass and north of West Commercial to facilitate the install, installation of one double-sided digital billboard signed for initial term of fifteen years, providing for effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bolton. I have a second by Commissioner Wright. A full presentation of this item was delivered on September eighth at Monday's staff agenda review. Our deputy city manager, Mrs. Callaway, is available to answer any questions. This item is now open to the public. Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. Discussion by the commission. As I already told you, I have questions. I did like sixty thousand a month, much better than what you got here, um, quite honestly.
I don't blame you.
I, uh, thank you. I don't really like your pay structure. I think when I'm looking at how much you will charge per sign, per, you have eight slides per second, right?
Eight, uh, eight per sign, so sixteen technically.
Okay, so even, even more. Um, and even if you consider that you have two laps out, you're still making approximately thirty thousand dollars per side, per day, if you're charging five thousand a month.
No, 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 month, no, no.
A month, so five thousand a month. If you charge five thousand a month.
We, we charge about three, uh, anywhere from, the local residents will probably pay about a thousand to fifteen hundred per slot, and a bigger company might pay three thousand or even maybe as high as four thousand. But that would be a, um, per, per slot per month, so.
Per slot per month, but one of the things you said actually about the rates for Tamarack business, while you said it was less, it was also less only because they were gonna get less time, airtime.
We also, no, as I just said, we also charge, um, like a McDonald's would probably pay three or four thousand a month, whereas a local business might just pay, um, a thousand or even fifteen hundred a month. But if, if they could only pay five hundred a month, we would never sell a whole slot for that. If that's all they could afford, we might give them a two-minute slot to, to, so they can at least have an advertising medium to compete with, you know, um, the internet and all the other issues. It's a lot of these businesses are facing a lot of competition. So if they can only afford a small amount, like, in my example, five hundred dollars, we can give them that opportunity.
What's a two-minute slot?
How much is it?
No, what is a two-minute slot?
Yeah, every other minute.
So it's an eight-second ad, instead of running one minute, it's our full clip, we run every other minute. So it reduces the cost and the effective-
And it runs twenty-four hours for that?
Same.
Yes, same.
What, I'm a McDonald's, I, actually, we have McDonald's here in the city of Tamarack. They're local. What are you gonna do?
Well, I would say, you know, that was probably a bad example. Coca-Cola is probably a better example. But, but to me, that's a local business. It's a franchisee. It's a local business.
I also think that it should be a base, base amount and then not the lesser of two. If it's a base amount and then twenty-seven percent or twenty-five percent thereafter, is that-
I'd say it's the greater. The greater, not the lesser.
No, I want it in addition. I don't want an or.
Yeah.
I want to know I'm getting this, or we're getting this, and then, I want the-
Yeah.
So if you're me, I'm not so good with the numbers, it's, that's for Commissioner Wright. Say you're making a hundred thousand, right, and we're getting thirty thousand automatically. So then you have seventy thousand left over, twenty-five percent more of that I want to come in on top of.
Yeah, but if-
Because you're making significant money off of the fact that we're leasing this property. That's my opinion.
Yeah, so if you did the numbers, because we, I just gave you the numbers, it would be, uh, the city would be getting well over fifty percent. And, um, um, and we, you know, we couldn't really make money. We have a, the cost of building these are about five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. So, um, and that's why we, it takes at least fifteen years to, and as a matter of fact, fifteen years would be our shortest lease. Usually we, they're longer because you're amortizing that, uh, that capital investment over time, so.
So you touched on the other thing I don't care for, fifteen years of the lease.
Yeah.
I, I don't like fifteen years and then fifteen years.
Yeah.
Way too much.
Yeah.
Too long of a time. Ten is even, is long, but easier to adjust to and palatable. I just personally don't think the business structure for there is good. The signage for ten days for twenty-four hours, selected for four calendar years, that's given to the city to determine. Is that correct? Just what it says in the lease.
I don't think I understood the question, sorry.
A licensor will choose four ten-day, twenty-four-hour slots for each calendar year. So that means we're picking for ten days one item that is gonna run every single rotation after every second. Yes?
No, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, then please explain. That's why I'm asking, please.
No, I think, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I think, um, we gave you a minimum number of, of slots you could, um, pick, but I, I don't remember, um, Ms. Callaway, was that over a year or?
Yeah, so we get four. Yeah, um. So the city gets the following. We get a public service announcement, announcement slot, but that is just based on space availability. We get four ten-day, twenty-four-hour slot. We also get one slot for civic events. And then, of course, they mention the local Tamarack business, and then there's a slot for emergency information if there's an emergency, and then there's a slot for amber alerts. So what you're talking about, Mayor, is the four ten-day, twenty-four-hour slot that the city gets.
Can you explain slots a little bit better? And I'm not talking about a casino. Just explain it, please, because it's a little-
Then I could afford to pay you sixty a month.
That'd be nice. Go to the slots.
So, um, we divide, uh, there's eight, we divide, um, the, uh, advertising or the promotion into eight, they call them flips, uh, per minute, um, for each bill, each sign. So there's two signs there, one northbound and one southbound. So there will be sixteen total flips or slots. They're the same thing. So your, the ad would last, because they're each minute, about seven and a half seconds each ad. So the ad stays up seven and a half seconds, goes to, to, uh, the second ad, to the third ad. So there's eight ads, um, for that, each side of that billboard or slots.
So there'll be twenty-four times in one day that my seven and a half seconds will?
No, because you'll get, uh, one per minute. So you'll get sixty, you'll get sixty per minute times twenty-four. If you, you know, in, in the example, if the local business paid five hundred dollars and maybe he got every two minutes, he would get thirty a minute in that example, times twenty-four.
So we're saying we're gonna have for ten days?
One ad every eight seconds every minute.
Right. And then we get just like four for the year. Okay. And then the one slot for advertising sponsored events, it's only if there's availability.
And, um, there's always availability. I mean, I, I think, uh, the nationwide average is about seventy-five percent penetration at any point in time.
I think we're gonna have the city, because the city is gonna have to determine which civic events, because you got five of us and we do all of our own events.
Right.
And then you have city events on top of it all, then that actually is a procedure and policy the city would have to come through.
No, it'll be as we're informed by the city.
Correct.
And that's how we discuss, that's how it was discussed by staff.
I, I do think that some of the control on what is considered advertising and not advertising should be more in your control at the same time. I have an issue with it only being left and subject to the city manager. I think that there should be, we've experienced in our city, someone who was going to run for office and all of a sudden their faces for their, are on bus benches for their other business before, running for election. That's a form of advertising with an intent for politics. So that too is something that I don't really like, that has happened in the past with other items. And I don't want- And I don't want, I'm a small business, I come to you and I want you to put my law firm up there.
Right.
Because I know I'm running in November of twenty-six.
Right.
That'd be wrong.
Right.
It should be cut off by January, where there should be an affidavit sign saying, I am not running for office in the next election cycle starting. So that's my opinion. I will, I will defer to, next is Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty-five percent, how do we come up with that number, come up with that number?
I mean, it was negotiated between us, it's, it's, you know, literally the highest we've, we pay, we've ever paid, so. But it was a negotiated number.
In your business, in your business, other than the fixed costs of building, building the billboard, what are recurring costs for advertising in your business?
That's a good question. We have FPL, the power.
Yeah.
And, and of course, well, I told you about the capital cost, so.
If the, the initial investment, say, costs you a certain amount of money, but after a while, you recoup that.
Yeah.
For example, in, in advertisement business with Google, you pay the publishers. So if I pay Google thirty bucks, Google is paying Tamarack Post or Tamarack Talk ten, ten dollars of that money.
Right.
So how, how, in terms of the twenty-five percent, it seems like you, you, you make a lot of profit, it's a high-profit business.
It's a gross number, that's not a net number.
Twenty-five percent of gross.
It's a gross.
So you're paying, you're paying twenty-five percent of profit?
Before any expenses are our...
But you don't have any exorbitant expenses in your, in that advertising business?
No, we don't. It's really just, you know, FPL and...
So twenty-five, twenty-five percent seemed low. It seems like we can ask for fifty percent, since it's the land that we're giving you. Without our land, you have no business.
Yeah, no, it's, it's true, but I, the, I mean, we can't make money at rates like that, in our business.
You said you don't have much overhead, from, from, from a business perspective. I'm talking from a business perspective now. If you don't have much overheads, if it's a high margins business, and we're providing the land, and you're only giving us twenty-five percent, as the land provider, we can ask for a little more, because your margin, your, your expense is not high.
Oh, well, I, I do want to remind everybody that obviously the rates are highest on I-95. Next best is the Turnpike, the least is Sawgrass, it's based on traffic counts. There's also the amount of carrying, the debt, maintenance, FPNL, and probably insurance, and a few other things we're forgetting. So that is, I said, remember you get the greater amount. So we fully expect that your, that sixty thousand in year one, which is already explained by staff, keeps going up. We believe within a pretty short time, you will far exceed that number. And that's found money, because obviously it's a piece, it's a little strip of property that you aren't using, and we kind of ended up this way in discussions with the city. So it, it, that is a high rate.
And, and I get that, and we appreciate that, but I'm just saying in terms of scalability, as you scale more, as you make more revenues, obviously your fixed cost is gonna stay fixed, your incremental cost is gonna not in, increase as much. So i- if you guys made two million bucks, and you're giving us twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of two million, that's about four hundred K, that's about five hundred, and your costs are only two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, you're making big profits in that number. Whereas if you give us fifty percent, you know, it doesn't exceed your costs of, of what it costs you to get to advertising.
Yeah, that's, that...
I, I'm just saying that, if, if, okay.
I think you might, I'd love to have a better estimate of what our revenue picture looks like, because I think, you know, especially, please go over there.
So, so you're saying you want to see how it performs in the first couple of years? And if it does perform well, we can come back and ask for higher rate, is what you're saying?
Well, no, that was a good try, but no, we're not saying that. What we are saying is it's a greater, and we fully expect it to constantly go up. So if all of a sudden we're doing great, the city literally is, is, to some extent, a partner, and their numbers go up with it, because it's based on the gross. So as we make more, the city makes more.
One clarification, please.
One clarification, what's based on the gross? Because here it says net.
No, it is gross. It says gross, I think.
Greater of either thirty thousand dollars per year for digital sign, plus all applicable taxes, or twenty-five percent of the net collected advertising revenue.
Yeah, but net collected advertising rent, revenue is the gross that we get, minus, fees that are paid to like an agency, but we get, it's gross of what we get. It's gross of what we get.
And that's the question I was asking, what is your fixed cost? You just mentioned agencies. So you're gonna have agencies that are selling spots on the billboard. So the revenues be twenty-five percent net agency fees. So if I have an agency and I come to you and say, well, I want to run an ad for Wyoming, and that ad costs five grand, and then my agency charges a thousand bucks, you make four thousand. So it's twenty-five percent of the four thousand, as opposed to the five thousand.
Correct. Well, because we never get the four, the five thousand.
You, you get the four thousand.
Right, and, right. So it's gross of our, our gross.
So that's, that's, so it's the gross of what you make in terms of selling the ads?
Correct. And it's rare that we pay an agency fee, just for the record. It's rare.
People, people come directly to you as they're advertising.
It's rare.
And do you sell to like, do you sell other advertising services, ancillary services, like Google or other stuff like that?
No.
This is your core business?
This is our core business.
And, and is this industry, how fast is this industry growing?
Not fast, because most of the spots are taken. So they're not, and state law requires certain spacing to, so there's very few spaces. And no billboard does, you know, except maybe in New York City, on, in Times Square, does that kind of revenue that you, you know, talked about. I mean, it'll, you know, hopefully do a few hundred thousand, three, four hundred thousand a year, that would be an excellent billboard. But it'll take a while to get there, and we will absorb those costs to, to get there.
So you're saying by agreeing to the twenty-five percent, you're mitigating some of your risks, you'll see if it performs well, and if it does perform well, we'll benefit from the upside, but you're not sure if it's gonna, if it's gonna perform as well as other advertising forms in the industry?
Clearly, yeah, clearly not like on I-95, for example, or even the Florida Turnpike. But we, we were bold enough to give you a fixed base rent as a minimum, notwithstanding us making money.
Okay, agree. You, you've made your business point.
Vice Mayor?
No, I was just saying, I was, I was very impressed with the, the contract. I think for us not making money on that land, period, there's not much that can be done with that land. And for you guys being patient and waiting three, three years, I think, and, and quite, being transparent and honest, I appreciate that. Not everyone that comes here is transparent, much less honest. So I appreciate you, and I, I don't think we're in the business of robbing business, right? So I think you're in business to make a profit, and I have no problem with us getting twenty-five percent when you start making money. I think it was well done. Unless, my, deputies, I keep wanting to call you superintendent, a city manager. How was this deal compared to other deals that are similar?
Thank you for asking that question, Vice Mayor. I neglected to say that this is the first time the city has negotiated a deal like this, so we went ahead and we did an appraisal. We wanted to make sure that we were getting the highest and best for that property, and because we're not accustomed to negotiating a billboard arrangement, we wanted to make sure that what we were getting was consistent with the industry standard. And the applicant had started out with a ten percent revenue share, and when we received our appraisal back, they recommended twenty-five percent to thirty, and this is what this does, says twenty-five percent, and it goes up to thirty over a period of time. They also recommended the sixty thousand, thirty per slide, per slot, which is what we did incrementally increase in, in the first initial term and the second term. So what's proposed is consistent and greater than industry standard.
Thank you.
So some of the commentary, that Sawgrass isn't so great, remember, it's Broward County. Sawgrass is expanding, we have two point six million people here already, so I'm not so sure that Sawgrass isn't so, gonna be rising to the level of, of the others, right? So I, I can't buy that logic on that one.
We hope so.
And then supply and demand, there's, as you said, there's not a lot of property out there. So there's this limited supply for some demand. And actually, since we only have two in the city, it's a pretty good thing if this is what we go with. I would highly recommend changing net in your, in your definitions to being subtotal, or something like that. You can't use the word net and gross and try to make it understandable for people trying to figure out what your definition of net is versus actual regular accounting principles. I don't see here a first and last security deposit. Most places, when they lease property, whether it's a house on it or not, there's no first and last. I just make this as a comment that there's no guarantees that certain things will be paid. What if you don't pay your bills? I don't see where there's at least something to hold on to for that other month.
Point out that it's a license agreement as opposed to a lease. I don't remember the reason, reason for that, but three years ago, but there was, there was an important reason for that way back when, and I just don't remember what the reason was, so.
Okay, understood, thank you. I also don't like the fact that we're gonna get to thirty in year twenty-three. What if you guys don't make it to twenty-three? Right, to twenty-three years? What if you don't want to be doing this in twenty-three years? Your, your business plan changes. It goes to, in twen-, years twenty-three to thirty, it goes to thirty percent. So we're at twenty-five percent for the first fifteen years. We go up six thousand dollars a year. Well, no, two years at thirty, you know, then it goes up four years later for three thousand dollars each side or six thousand dollars. I don't see the exponential growth. I have no problem with people making money. I think they're entitled to make money. But I missed some of my time earlier, so I'm gonna take some, a minute. I think that there could be a different way of structuring the first fifteen years, where you're still making your money, recouping your costs for having to build this monstrosity of, because you said it's big, right? And I do also think, from what I've seen, you have control over the numbers on what you sell things for. When business gets better, which it really will get soon, I believe in it, or else you wouldn't be doing it, that the numbers are gonna increase as well, which would get us some more money as well. But I think that some of these numbers need a little working, my opinion.
I, I do want to say for the record, two things, to remind the commission that, as the city staff has already pointed out, you have total audit capabilities of anything we're doing. And also, that's why you have a fifteen-year deal. So if hopefully we come back in fifteen years, then obviously you're gonna be renegotiating everything.
Why would you say we'd obviously be renegotiating? Why are we putting another fifteen-year contract in here as a...
No, no, what I'm saying, but it's built in that it's only a fifteen-year lease, it's not a twenty or a twenty-five.
Or a license.
Therefore, you know, you, you know, if we grow, you grow, and that's why it's built that way.
Right.
And industry standards have already been indicated and, you know, and have been met.
I don't think that all standards are the ones that need to be met, sometimes they need to be higher. We don't always have to go to the base floor. So, but also you're saying years fifteen or sixteen in twenty-three, sixteen to thirty, can be renegotiated, then why are we having an option contract already included? So I'm not really sure I understand you on that one. Just, again, it's my opinion that I think the first fifteen years can be renegotiated. If we're gonna have it at fifteen years, I think the numbers should be a little bit more favorable to the city, while you still get to make some of your money. Because I see what other places could also charge, and I know what you could do. My opinion, it is what it is.
Yeah, well, the rates are the rates, but I, I do want to follow up with Ms. Callaway, because I thought that was important, I had forgotten, they had hired, you had hired a consultant to come in, and they pushed us, you know, very hard on, and we, we essentially met the maximum. They gave a range of what these, and, and we hit the maximum, so, so, you know, I feel, you know, it was painful for us to do that, but we, we did, and, and they had the support of that expert providing that information, so.
I understand and accept it, but doesn't mean I like it. And I would actually think that that should be within the first fifteen years, we should be at the thirty percent, not making us wait till year twenty-three. Thank you. Commissioner Bolton?
Ms. Callaway, I saw that. Nothing in this agreement precludes advertising from municipalities. For instance, Broward County wants to advertise Fitzy, or North Lauderdale has a festival, or City of Tamarack is, you know, advertising something, there's...
No, there's a provision that has advertising, that has unauthorized content, that's the only provision that really precludes certain advertising, and that provision does not prohibit that. Just whatever's listed under Section 3A, which is unauthorized content, where the applicant or the owner is not permitted to, to advertise those type of content. And it has a list, yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Commissioner Patterson?
Can we call the question, Mayor?
If no one else says anything further, the answer is yes. Seeing nobody else wishes to speak on this item, City Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
No.
Commissioner Bolton?
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes four to one.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You got it. Ladies and gentlemen, we usually have a hard stop by ordinance for, at eleven-thirty. It is eleven-twelve, we have one item left. I would like a motion in a second to extend it till we finish item eleven, which could actually be before eleven-thirty.
Madam Mayor, on, on Monday, Mustafa did present a, did a presentation on exactly the Eastside Community Center update, so that's online, I, I would like to remove the item.
Sounds good, I watched the item as well, so, since it was your item, it is removed, which means, ladies and gentlemen, it is eleven-thirteen, this meeting's adjourned, get home safely. Thank you.